Please, if you'd like, enjoy me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
First we have announcements. Actually, right on this one, I see a check in my packet. I don't know if it's still up there. I haven't signed a check yet, but there's going to be a check for $25,000. Actually, $28,000 over our $25,000 purchasing policy. So, it's for Atlantic Salt for Snow and Ice.
I think that was a prior week.
Okay.
Was it this week, was it last?
Okay.
Just take it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Next is a, actually, I'll make a motion for a public hearing to consider a local law amending Chapter 9, Board of Architecture Review, the Village Code with respect to demolition of substantial portion of a building in the historic Overlake District for March 16, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. Just want to give us the two seconds, really.
Yeah, I know, it'll be two seconds. We'll be pretty sorry. This law, don't say that, that'd make me sound like I'm so repulsive. This law is an amendment to the regulations for demolition of contributing building in a historic district. The existing regulations, which the Board enacted almost two years from now, require ARB approval of any demolition. They've got very example standards for approving the entire demolition of a building, but those standards don't work when the ARB is approving only a partial demolition. Under the statute, demolition is defined as destroying all or a substantial portion of a building. And then substantial portion is defined as any portion of an exterior wall, vertical or porch facing a street. So, it could be demolition even though it's just removal of a part of a building. So, if somebody wants to come in to tear down a porch, it doesn't make sense for him or her to have to provide information, appraisals, offers to sell the property, the kind of stuff you require to demolish a whole building. So, this amendment fills that hole and it gives the ARB a standard for demolition of only part of a building. And the standard is that whether demolition is a substantial portion of a building, whether it is the entire building, the applicant must demonstrate that the demolition and the proposed replacement, if any, will not be comparable with a historical building nor with a historic district. It also modifies, you know, what you're trying to submit, the small changes. And this has been reviewed by the ARB and the Historic District Committee, and they were most comfortable with it.
Just to be clear, Marianne, there's also a, as part of what has to be provided, a drawing or a plan for the replacement structure, right, but not necessarily a proof. The proposed drawing, is that correct?
Yeah, that's a modification that would have to be there before you. You have to submit pictures. There's a little bit different on the filing requirements. That's based on what, because the ARB did have an application for partial demolition before that. And so, then they had some, a good sense of what they wanted. And that's written in here. What it says is, where only portion is said to be demolished, photographs of the building in its existing condition and of adjacent buildings. And then, there already is this stuff about submitting drawings of the replacement, no, they don't have to be approved. And actually, that was fixed. That was just the wording. It was fixed in.
It was kind of a catch-22 in that, I think, about the approved drawings.
Yeah, yeah. That was fixed. Now, I didn't know this may want me to go through every one of those details, but yes, they can't be bothered.
I said two seconds.
I know.
Well, yes, so, I make a motion for a public hearing on March 16, 2017. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? And the next one is a public hearing to consider a local law amending Chapter 213 of the Village Code, vehicle and traffic with respect to parking in municipal parking area on the north side of Hudson Road West. We're just changing that six-hour, currently six-hour limit to three hours. Help with the enforcement in the area.
Yes, that's down near the Archie Hudson.
The top part of the Archie Hudson train station.
Is that also permit available, pardon?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'll make a motion for a public hearing to consider a local law amending Chapter 213 of the Village Code for March 6, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. Do you have a second? All in favor? All right. Next is correspondence. The first one is Peter Bernstein and others. I know in his letter, he said there'd be three people to speak on behalf of this. I see a lot more than three people on the name, so I don't know if you want to, I can read some of his letter, or if you'd just rather just come up and kind of make a presentation, it's whatever you guys would do. Tom's going to be speaking. He's nodding knowingly.
So, I assumed that you were going to talk a little bit about the resolution, but I think it's.
It's either way.
So, my name's Tom Backer, and I live at 14 North Buckout Street. I'm here as one of the spokespeople for the much larger group. There were 57 people who signed their name, and subsequent to that, many, many other people who came in a little late, who also wanted to sign their name in the letter that was submitted to the Board. And we submitted two proposed resolutions and two proposed statutes that were emailed to the Board this past week. And there will be two other spokespeople who will speak after me. In summary, the first proposed resolution seeks to ensure that Irvington continues to be a welcoming community by stating that Irvington's financial and human resources will not be used to assist the federal government in enforcement of immigration law, except as required by federal or state law. Should the Board choose to pass this resolution, the first proposed statute, which a following speaker will talk about in more depth, would set out policies and procedures for the police department so they could properly comply with the resolution. The rationale behind the resolution and statute is first and foremost one of public safety. It is important to foster, not hinder, communication and cooperation between the immigrant community and law enforcement. Undocumented immigrants should never be afraid to come forth to assist police in investigations, or for example, to report domestic abuse. There's an unmistakable moral dimension to this proposed resolution as well. These are our neighbors, our visitors, our workers, and our friends. They're people who we value and who are integrated into our communities. And the extent to which we can provide them with safety and security within the confines of the law, we want the Village to do so. What we are asking the Board to pass is squarely within the mainstream of American politics. Hundreds of municipalities across the country have passed similar resolutions. It is also within the mainstream of American history. We're asking for the same safety and security that was demanded by the proud immigrants who are related to so many of us in this room tonight. What we are proposing in no way impedes federal immigration enforcement officials from doing their job and enforcing the law. We do not suggest noncompliance with federal law. Rather, we want local resources to be used for the community and not used for what is a federal responsibility. The second proposed resolution is to encourage Albany to allow undocumented immigrants access to driver's licenses, something that 12 states already allow. This as well is first and foremost an issue of public safety. Unlicensed drivers tend to get in more accidents as they may not have completed the necessary driver's training and may not properly understand traffic rules. From a financial perspective, extending access to driver's licenses will decrease insurance rates as the pool of insured drivers will increase, and at the same time, the pool of uninsured drivers will decrease. There is also a moral dimension to this proposed resolution. Access to driver's licenses will decrease the fear that many undocumented immigrants feel each and every time they get into their cars and provide them with proper identification, which allows police positive identification in the event of a traffic or other stop. Another presenter that will follow me will speak to this point in a moment. The second statute we have proposed, which will also be discussed later in further depth, simply states that village resources will not be used to assist in the investigation or enforcement of any federal program requiring registration of individuals on the basis of race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, ethnicity, or national origin. I thank the Board for their consideration.
Thanks, Tom.
Hello, my name is Marion Asmith, and I live at 85 Harrington Road in Irvington. We are presenting two statutes tonight, which Tom briefly mentioned, and I'm going to explain a brief and more depth. The first proposed statute prohibits village employees, including the police, from acquiring about immigration statutes in the course of performing their everyday duties, from arresting individuals based on immigration status, from honoring civil detain requests from federal Immigration and Customs Enforcement, known as ICE, and from honoring ICE information requests. It would make this resolution, rather, this statute would reiterate and strengthen the message of the first resolution. Please note that the statute, rather, contains exceptions for federal investigations of criminal or terrorist activity. And also, please note that the statute is based on model legislation distributed by State Attorney General Eric Schneiderman. The second statute would prohibit cooperation with the creation or enforcement of a federal registry on the basis of race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, ethnicity, or national origin. We believe that this statute expresses basic American values of equality under the law, which sadly need to be enshrined in local legislation during these challenging times. Our nation and other nations have been down the path of registry before, and it is a dark path. Think not only of the Jews of Europe and their genocide, think about here in the U.S., where we forced Japanese-Americans to register during World War II and then intern them in desert camps. This is a shameful part of our history. Although there is no current law that requires our Village to provide information for a possible registry, we wish to make it clear that it is our policy not to do so, should it ever be requested in the future. We hope you will consider our submissions.
Good evening. Is this on? Hi, my name is Jennifer Friedman, and my home is at 200 Riverview Road. Although I am here this evening as an Irvington resident and not in my professional capacity, I am also the managing director of the Center for Legal Services at My Sister's Place, a nonprofit organization in Westchester providing services to survivors of domestic violence and human trafficking. Half of our legal staff of 12 is dedicated to immigration legal services. And as such, I have become very familiar with the deep concerns of the immigrant community of Westchester. We assist thousands of victims every year. In short, people are living right now in fear. Our community members are afraid every time they leave their homes in the morning and send their kids to school, afraid that their children may return home to an empty house with their parents detained by ICE. Our office and other nonprofits locally are advising undocumented immigrants to create safety plans, plans for who their children should call in the event of their detention, so that they will not be placed in foster care as their parents are deported. Truly a chilling conversation to have with the parent of young children. I am grateful and humbled that one local resident of Osining has provided us with a statement that I will now read. My name is Lourdes. I live in Osining with my husband and our three daughters since we came from Ecuador 16 years ago. My husband and I are currently undocumented, therefore, we are not allowed to get a driver's license. So, this whole time, we have been driving unlicensed and trying really hard not to give police officers a reason to stop us. Sometimes, me or my husband didn't succeed and got pulled over. Then, we are very afraid. Also, our car is impounded and we lose a day of work. Every day, we leave the house with a plan. We have phone numbers of family or friends that could be of help in the event that we are stopped. If they are able to get there before the tow truck, at least we can avoid the fees of the process of impounding the vehicle. We have no other option as working parents. We have responsibilities to attend to every day. Living in the suburbs, we must drive our kids to school, drive to work, doctor's appointments, after-school programs, emergencies, social activities, et cetera. On one very scary occasion, we got pulled over in the summer. Luckily, an angel sent us an officer with a good heart. He asked some questions and let us go. We were and still are so grateful to him. There are not only a few hundred families in the same situation, we are millions across the country. And as the laws are today, a routine stop could become a deportation process for us, which is my family's worst fear, to be separated. Thank you.
Could you play, Jason Manning of 14 Willow Street, one of the 57 names who signed the letter? I won't repeat all the very excellent remarks that preceded me. I just want to add one additional point of the Mayor Trustee's consideration, which is that the first speaker mentioned that this proposed sanctuary city legislation is within the mainstream of American politics, pointing out the hundreds of other cities who've signed similar legislation. I think it's helpful for the Mayor Trustee to consider as well, that it's actually within the mainstream of clearly established Supreme Court law that we, as a municipality, are entitled to do this. And there's a doctrine, and I won't bore you with the details of which, called the anti-commandering doctrine, was pioneered by, I think, people like Justice Scalia, and very conservative jurists, as well as jurists all across the spectrum, that basically says, the federal government can't tell local government to do things without giving them the resources to do it. They can't say, "We want everyone to have solar power, so Mayor Smith has to put panels in everybody's roof unless they give us the money to do it." And similarly, they can't say, "Our local police have to be deputized to the DHS without giving us the resources to do it." So, simply as a matter of, you know, what are we going to have responsibilities as local government, and just as, you know, squarely appropriate and necessary legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. You want?
We're going to have a public, we're going to have a public comment hearing.
We are, exactly. So, if you feel moved to speak after I talk about the other few pieces of communication I filed. I mean, I think that it's probably appropriate for us to address this as well, since I think maybe a few of you are here to talk about this. As a board, we've kind of talked about this.
I can't hear you for some reason.
Geez, okay. People usually don't say that about me. As a board, we've actually discussed this offline. Many of us have attended rallies together. We've met people's homes to talk about these issues. And I can tell you that all five of us are squarely behind these resolutions, maybe not in their exact form, but in the spirit of them anyway. I think we view Irvington as a welcoming place that is, you know, we want everyone to feel safe and welcome here, and I want them all to look at our police as people who are going to keep them safe and welcome here. Additionally, as a personal experience, I've had several of our restaurant workers, I've had several other workers in town that are, I'm presuming undocumented, because they've asked me flat out if I was going to leave my police department to round them up and send them home. So, to me, this isn't conjecture, this isn't a Facebook post that's supposed to incite people. These are people that are actually scared. Many of them have lived here 20 years. I know many of them that have worked very hard with attorneys, and the laws are always changing on this. I think one thing that you can say that everyone will agree on about immigration is it's a difficult problem. It's not easily signed by the stroke of a pen. It's actually, I think, made worse now by strokes of pen in Washington. Many of them have worked diligently to get their status upgraded. Many of them come to the ninth inning or the end zone, whatever sports analogy you want to use, and for whatever reason, the laws change, something happened, they're kind of right back where they started, and that's almost scary. And these are people that have paid taxes for 20 years, they have children here, they've raised children here, and they're still undocumented. I think that if I had been in Washington signing executive orders, we would have sped something up to create a path for citizenship for these people, because that's exactly the way it was for my family two generations ago. I think we'd like to look back and say, "Well, no, my family was different because they knew someone here and, you know, that someone spoke up for them." But that's exactly how all these people here are here as well. I think the only difference is it didn't take them weeks to get here, they got here on the plane typically, so I'm not sure what a wall's going to do anyway. But I think that the, there's been a lot of hyperbole since, you know, November 8th and certainly since January 20th. This is one issue where I don't think there's been hyperbole. I think that people are actually scared. I think that I've heard rumors about, you know, police departments being empowered to do this, local police departments. I haven't been able to verify any of those, but the thought that that's happening is scary to me. But I think what's even scarier is that we have people in 2017, America, in New York, that are talking about registrations and people being registered for whatever reason. I don't care if it's because your favorite color is blue, I don't care what the reason is. The fact that we would even be talking about that is appalling to me. And, you know, and yes, there's no law that requires that yet, but the fact that we're even talking about that, what's happened to our discussion and discourse in our country, that that's even a thing that we would even remotely consider as a possibility of happening. You know, so I think that there are positives of all this, if that's possible. Just hear me for a second. I think that the fact that there's probably 50 of you here now, the fact that there were 70 of us at a meeting yesterday, in fact, there was 1,000 people almost in Sleepy Hollow, you know, one Sunday ago. Because frankly, immigration's been something, particularly speaking of immigration, that's been going on for far too long. And it's because it's really hard to figure out, because there are so many people that are here, and so many people that are making a real contribution to our society. And I think most people recognize that fact. And I think that the fact that we're all talking about this now, I think we will come up with a solution. And I think it's not going to be in spite of Washington, Washington's going to actually obviously have to come up with a solution, but I think that there's enough loud voices right now talking about this that we're actually going to get the best brains thinking about it. Because it's frankly a group of people that I think haven't had the luxury of having My Sister's Place people. And I think it's not even that there aren't the resources, I think that they're often afraid to reach out for them, because we're, a lot of the countries they come from, any kind of governmental agency is typically not good, they're very corrupt, so they're often, you know, they'd rather just kind of live in the shadows and just stay there. I think now we can push them out and give them a path. And I think that that's what's going to happen in the longer term. In the shorter term, I think you want to have places like Irvington and the other Greenberg villages frankly, that are saying, "This is a safe place for you, and we're going to help you, and we're going to work on this together." And I think a lot of you being here today are here for that specific reason. And I just want to say, on behalf of our board, we're going to do everything we can in our limited resources here to do what we can to help, but we're certainly not going to be doing things to hurt the people that are the most vulnerable, in my opinion. So, I know I said a lot, I hope everyone can hear me, but it's an issue that... It's also something that I never thought we would be speaking about at a very important meeting, because it's so enormous. But the fact that we have local residents coming to me, I was actually flattered that they trusted me enough to ask me, but it really made my dinner hard to swallow that night, when I had two or three people in the same restaurant ask me. And my children were there. And it's just bizarre to me to think that you can have children at home and think about, you can be deported and your children can be stuck here. My understanding is Abbott House is working on a project now where they're taking care of children that are, actually, that's their issue, is that maybe they were anchor babies and someone was deported, and they're actually living in Abbott House now. So, this isn't a new problem, that happened a couple of years ago. I mean, this has been going on for years. But I think the one positive I see in all this is that out of all this anxiety and fear and anger, we're going to be talking about this more, and we're going to get some solutions. And I think that that's going to be a lot of these issues. And maybe that's the great thing that happened in the last election, is a lot of these issues that have been just below the surface are going to come to a head, and we're going to have to finally deal with them. And I'm confident still that this is the same America that we had on January 19th with all the same values. And in the long run, this is going to be a positive. So, if I could put a spin on it and a nice little bow at the end, that's my uplifting message. But, you know, I think that, I've said too much already, but if anyone else wants to join in, feel free and have some water.
I was just going to say, I wanted to thank Peter and Tom and the people that came together to work on this, David Immamur also, who's not here, but I know he had a lot to do with this in terms of some of the wording. I just want to, as opposed to echoing everything you said, I just wanted to say that I do think it's important that we take the steps outlined to make it clear to, not just to the community at large, but also to, you know, village employees, including our police officers, that we have a certain standard of behavior that we want to have enforced in the Village. And that standard of behavior is one in which we are looking, as you said, to make a safe environment for people. And it should not be, safety should not be based on, you know, fear, as you said, in terms of deportation, et cetera. So, all of this, I really do support strongly, and I want to throw one other little piece on the table, which is that I think another action that the Village should take is probably looking at a resolution to address the same sort of behavior of civil, whatever, what's it called, civil?
Civil detainment.
Civil detainment, yes, sorry. With, based on ICE orders at the county level. Supposedly, we heard yesterday, in fact, and it's not been verified, but we heard that the county police have been directed to actually proactively enforce ICE orders. So, I think one of the things that we could do as a village that would extend slightly would be to also look at a resolution, of course, it's not non-binding, but we could send to the county executive and to the county legislature that says that as a community, we do not believe that the county police should be directed to enforce ICE detainment proceedings.
One update I have, and as I talked to a rank and file Westchester County Police Officer, he said they hadn't gotten any new directives. So, I've actually asked for meeting with the deputy county executive to clarify one way or the other. So, hopefully, I'll know in the next couple of days.
Great.
Anybody else?
Mary? I would really like to first thank the Mayor for expressing in emotional and honest terms how he feels, and really, when he says, you know, "We feel this way," it's true. There's a lot of passion up here. I would also like to thank the committee and how you've handled these resolutions, how you presented your ideas clearly. I'm thrilled, I'm so proud of Irvington for doing the right thing, for being here. These are very important issues. It's a very hard time, without a doubt. I was at a rally in White Plains, in which Andrea Stewart-Cousins organized, some of you were there, I believe. And it was pretty thrilling to see Eric Schneiderman there, Paul Finer, the Mayor of White Plains, all speaking about the same issue, many other municipalities supporting this kind of initiative. So, I spoke on behalf briefly of Irvington, to say that we're small, but we are, we very much want to be as welcoming a community as any. So, I do know that our usual procedure when we have these things is that our village attorney usually looks at proposals for legislation, and, you know, it's the will of the Board to review some of these things. The things that I have in front of me are the two resolutions, but I don't know that the ones that you were saying were statutes. I don't know if I have all the paperwork in front of me.
They were attached to the email.
Yeah, okay. I just don't think they were copied here in front of me. But that's the kind of thing, what we need to do is to pursue our usual careful review of things, and you guys have started this in the right way. It's the best way to move this forward, and I feel quite confident that we'll be able to move this, I don't know, by early March, I'd say. We just need a hearing about it. So, thank you all, really, it's really heartening to see you all.
I've never been prouder thanks to my fellow villagers in a reporting, never. People come here all the time, people come here all the time to advocate for various causes and concerns that are important, and have to do with the appearance and what happens in our village, and how fast people drive their cars, and what color they paint their houses, whatever. I'm not minimizing the importance of that, but this is where it really matters. So, to have you guys all show up tonight, to have all of the work that went into bringing this before us, to have you give us something good to go, thank you. We hear you, and we'll get it done.
Yeah, thank you all again, and now we have a letter about sidewalks. Equally important, well, not equally important, but important nonetheless.
So, I guess, stay tuned to the Philly Gmail, right?
Yes, well, obviously, if there's actual, you know, legislation required, well, now it's public law. If it's going to be resolutions, we can do that quicker. So, it might need to be a two-part process. We'll figure out what's best, talking to some of, you know, other Greenberg neighbors as well, what's practical, what's best, what we need. And, you know, and I'm hoping this is the last of these type of things we'll need, but, you know, I think that also... but, you know, I think that also a very vigilant board. We haven't typically been as vigilant, you know, with national issues, but I think we all have been now. You know, it's trying to find three new sources on every issue has been a challenge, but it's been worth it.
And I would put in a plea that if you, anyone in this room doesn't get the email blast from the village, notices from us. I know you get notices from Facebook and elsewhere, but you just go to www.irvingtonny.gov and you say, "I want to get notices on this, 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 and this." And then you'll know when public hearings are, you'll see agendas. And when you do go on the homepage now, you will see a statement, we made a resolution that we had when Governor Cuomo originally sent out a letter saying that New York was and was going to continue to be a safe place for everybody with some hotline numbers. That's actually on our website right now. So get those notices so you know what's happening, and we hope that we keep seeing you. Thank you.
This is Kenny Zarelli.
Okay, next letter.
I'm writing this letter to inform you...
You don't have to stay for all this.
I'll just hear the sidewalk one now. I'm writing this letter to inform you of the deteriorating conditions of the sidewalks on Main Street in Irvington, particularly in front of 77 Main Street. I'm the owner of Zarelli's Deli located 77 Main Street for the past 34 years. I've attempted to inform several employees of the village of Irvington's poor condition of sidewalks, no avail. After the last few months, I personally assisted four residents have fallen because of the uneven, broken, splintered, and cracked sidewalks. They have become a hazard. In addition, the trees that line Main Street are overgrown, and the roots are actually growing through the sidewalks, causing them to buckle and break out. As a business owner in the village, I am very concerned with the safety of my customers, my employees, all those families that walk up and down Main Street, myself. I would appreciate if someone from your office could get back to me as to the plans for the village, to make it necessary repairs, to make the sidewalks safe for all in a timely fashion. Thank you for your dispaid attention to this request. Sincerely, Ken Zarelli, from Zarelli's Deli. You know, Larry and I spoke, this is on the agenda for the radar screen for early spring, hopefully. The longer-term issue has been getting the proper trees, tree wells. We talked about not having tree wells, and we've been working on a lot of different things. I think that, you know, we've kind of come to some conclusions now. We're getting the final pieces together, and we anticipate this being all repaired in the spring, so. Sure know when anyone calling on sidewalks.
I know in particular, in this area, there were a couple sidewalk locations that were looked at by the Tree Commission, and they were talking to Greg about the notion, as opposed to removing the trees, actually grinding down the sidewalk to level it out, where it's been heaved up a bit. And that kind of grinding solution was actually used in several other locations on Main Street, and apparently works fine and is probably a lot cheaper than removing a mature tree.
Okay.
So that's a discussion. I don't know where it's at, but that was kind of the recommendation the Tree Commission gave back to DPW.
Okay.
Sounds like we're moving forward on this.
We are. So hopefully, when the weather gets nice, we'll have some nicer sidewalks for people to walk on. The next five pieces of correspondence are all kind of part of the public hearing, really, I think, to the solar energy equipment. So why don't we maybe save those until we get down there, to the public hearing? So there being no additional correspondence assigned, we'll open up for public comments.
Which means, anyone who wants to continue to talk about immigration or something else can talk now. Sorry, just to get everyone out of their stupor.
Hi, I'm Michael Hannah from Buck House Street, Irvington, and I'm so appreciative of the work of our neighbors, putting together these two recommendations and to hear that you support and principle following through on them. In getting to thinking more and more about these issues and learning more, two things I'd ask in following through on this is, I'd really love to hear, as we move forward, a statement from our Fine Irvington Police Department in terms of what their perspective is in this process, and perhaps giving some information about their relationship with other entities such as the county. And that is my second question. I'm glad you're speaking with the assistant deputy of the Westchester County Police. But, you know, another question I have is, you know, when somebody is sent to the Westchester County Jail, I've heard, I don't know this, that ICE is there every day, so I'm curious to understand that relationship, that if we, you know, what, in what situations is someone in Irvington sent to the Westchester County Jail? Because I don't know what that is, and to understand what happens to them once they're there. Because the stories that really are affecting, and the ones that, as you mentioned, is, you know, the effect on families, you know, there's the old Fray's God, family country. And I was just reading the Washington Post, polar sites that in fact, in America, family comes first, and I want to make sure that we're protecting families, so. I thank you for your follow-through, and I'm curious, as we move forward, to maybe answer something like that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Doesn't have to be immigration, could be sidewalks.
Anybody else? Because I'm going solo. Well, solo, you wait for the public hearing. Are we going to stay before the public hearing?
I'm not talking about solo now, I'm talking about solo later.
No, I know.
This is about the two reservations. I want to thank anybody who proposed those statements, and I want to thank the board for your positive response. I really appreciate it. And I just want to mention that I am an example of somebody who's been, whose car has been hit and damaged by a truck driven by an undocumented immigrant. And I particularly support, I mean, I support all of it, but it's an example of, you know, supporting the need for, you know, real driver's license, because, you know, this happened on Broadway right outside the high school entrance, and luckily, nobody was hurt. But, you know, I think we need to make sure that everybody who's driving in our communities is licensed properly and is a safe driver.
I'm very proud of you. I'm Kathy Kaufman, 28 North Evers Street, Irvington. And I just wanted to add that I agree with everything everyone said. I just wanted to mention that in terms of equal treatment and how sort of the Irvington, as a village, and the Irvington Police touch the lives of immigrants and people of color, I've been thinking about this a long time, as many of you know, and I've sort of discussed it with lots of people in the community, but I would, the NAACP has recommended that in order to establish that, and ensure that the community does not have racial profiling by the police, there are a series, a small series of data points that should be collected for administrative purposes on police stops and contacts people have with the police that can be then analyzed just to verify and maintain that we have equal treatment of everyone who has an encounter with the police in the village. I have checked with the police department, I understand we do not collect any data currently on the demographics of individuals who are stopped by the police regardless of whether or not the encounter ends in some kind of arrest. And in fact, we actually don't collect any data at all on police stops in Irvington unless the outcome is some kind of arrest or fine. So anyone who's stopped and then just let go, or stopped on suspicion of something and/or searched, that doesn't go on any record unless there's actually an arrest is made. So what, so we actually have no data at all collected at this time. And I know because I foiled it.
What kind of data points are you talking about?
Well, NAACP has a small data set that they recommend and has been adopted by many states. I think there are something like 23 states have adopted the requirement that these data points be collected. I might be wrong. Don't quote me on the number of states. It's a small data set that you collect on every police stop, and that can be used then to verify that there's equal treatment of people in police stops. And so many states have adopted those, that policy, and I would like to just bring that forward to the village and ask, I'm happy to provide more information on the recommended approach. But I think it's an important...
I think it's just, I think the tricky widget there is, given from my own minimal law enforcement experience, when we used to pull people over, one of the things about, you know, kind of letting someone go is that there's not a document of it. You know, so if you pull someone over and they say, "Oh, my gosh, my, you know, my two-year-old daughter is home alone because my mother had to go somewhere," and you're like, "Okay, go ahead, I'm not going to give you a ticket." There's no place to document that, because if you say, "I let that person go," even though they're going, you know, 72 and 55, then it's like, well, you can't do that, you know? So, and for whatever reason, and I think I know why, but discretion is one of the biggest things about law enforcement. They like to have that discretion in the field, or they're not under the thumb. So I think the purpose of what you're saying is excellent. I think if we have good demographics and everyone that's ticketed, I'm assuming we do, I'm not sure, but...
We don't have any.
Okay. That's something we definitely have. So if you get a speeding ticket, then we can have something. But I think there, if you kind of pull somebody over, but there's no paperwork generated, it's kind of hard to have like the "I let them go" paperwork, you know?
No, I know, but I, you know, I do, I do know two people who were searched and then let go because they didn't have anything. And I'd like to know that it wasn't just because they were Hispanic.
Sure. I mean, I could look into see how, what kind of practical paperwork there is for something.
Yeah.
It starts somewhere.
Well, I'm happy to provide the...
If like you see a car go and you don't stop them, then you say, "You have to write that one down." You don't even get, you start your car, like, you know, where does it end? You know, I think that that's the interesting, any kind of interaction.
If I may, just also, one of the very moving letters that was probably from an undocumented immigrant talked about the police officer, the angel, who was sent to her, who didn't give her a ticket, who didn't stop her. Also, the other side of this, one part of what we want to make sure we don't do is profile. I understand you're talking from a very different point of view, and you're looking to get that data for a different reason, but we have to be real careful.
Sorry, I'm not understanding.
If you want to document everybody we stop by race.
Yeah.
When we're trying to avoid profiling people who live here by race, then we have a little, you can't say we're doing it for the good reason, we just don't want you to do it for the bad reason. It's a little tricky.
Janice, I think you might be missing one part of it, which is, without the statistics, you can't understand if there's profiling going on.
I understand, but I'm just saying that this becomes a more complicated nuanced issue, and I think we just have to look at it very carefully.
Sorry, it really does. I don't know what, I don't see the downside, but maybe this isn't the right time either. I don't want to...
Well, send us the guidelines.
Yeah, I'll just send you the document, and you can look at it and see if you, you know, what you think. It's a starting point, really, more than anything else. Thanks.
Anybody else?
I just want to say, before we go on, you know, I've heard people comment, I don't know how serious or not, Irvington residents say that they think that there is an unusual number of non-white driver stoppages going on that they see. I have no idea, and can't answer that question without the statistics, and so...
I understand. I'm just saying it's, you know, there are two, we just have to be very careful, because this can be a two-edged sword. Very careful. I understand the value of getting that information. Just let's look at how, if we're going to do it, how we do it.
Hi, I'm Eva Charham, I live at 14 Willow Street, and my assistant, Jason, just spoke earlier, and we had the two little kids, so apologies for causing a little bit of a disturbance. So I might have missed what was...
We're happy to have the conversation.
And I might have missed what was said at the end in terms of next steps. I think, like myself, who this is my first time coming to a town hall meeting, we've lived in Irvington for two and a half years, and I definitely count myself as somebody who really felt after the election, I definitely needed to get more involved in local politics. So I'm very happy to be here. I wish it were under better circumstances, but, you know, consider us your friends and allies in this. So, and there are a lot of other people who feel very similarly. So what I would like to do is share with a bunch of friends and colleagues who are also getting more engaged about the next steps. And again, sorry if I missed that. Will you be posting the proposals online? Will we be discussing them? Will you be voting on them March 6? And I'm asking now because people are actually over at the Westchester County Legislators' meeting, which is having a very live discussion as well about the proposal to restrict what happens around gun shows. So I was told I would report back from this meeting, and we're doing the same, so if you could just give me some kind of the next steps.
Sure. There's two parts to that. I think we're, as far as something like this, a resolution or something, we could have, we'll definitely have that by March 7. I mean, I'm actually not going to miss one of the meetings, the last February meeting, so probably the first meeting in March. If we actually have to change any kind of laws, we'll have to post it. We'll probably announce the public hearing in March, if there's an actual legislation change.
My guess is this can be done by resolution, pressing policy. That's why I ran out to ask the woman who was asking for statute, was there was a particular reason she mentioned statute, because this didn't seem to work. And I also read Eric Schneiderman's pamphlet, which was really helpful.
It's very good. It's even as fun to read. Is that well? Fun is another word, but it's very...
You just said it's a policy, so if it's a policy, you could just do it by...
That's kind of what I meant from talking to the other mayors around who are maybe a week or so ahead of us, and some of them are. It seems like you don't actually need to change any...
That's the one discussion that I'd like to have more, we're not going to do it tonight, I understand, but I'd like to have more understanding of the trade-offs, because in my mind, the policy statements seem sufficient, but am I missing something?
Yeah, I mean, right now, you don't have your police policies, they're not statutory. You know, it's not in the statutes, that's why it can just be by policy. It doesn't make it any less enforceable or any less binding.
Well, that's the question, is it any...
I wouldn't think so. But anyway, if you want, we can talk about it in the advice and cancel session.
And I'll just mention, I'll comment, and then we can, why that would be helpful, because I know that Terry Town has come back and said they may, once hearing that we had potential statutes in addition to the resolutions, they said they were going, they were going to think about it, look into it, try to figure out what the pros and cons and necessity or not. So that's where the discussion would be helpful.
Any other...
Can I just say one thing in response?
Sure.
Before you leave.
I'll respond to that. Take some notes.
Just that, you know, you pointed out that you hadn't, you've lived here two and a half years, this is the first time you've come out to a meeting like this, and it's because of this particular awful situation in Washington and the impact it's having in our community. Echoing what Brian said before, the only good thing about this is that it's bringing people out. So keep coming. We have a lot of work to do.
And a lot of things we're thinking we should have been working on already, frankly, so we just have an urgency now. Anyone else for the public comment?
Hi, Kristen Law, 58 West Clinton Avenue. I want to ask about parking, a couple of things. I had a question about the parking lot across the street from Bazaar. I think I remember when I was on the board that that lease was coming up in 2017, and I wondered to ask the board if that lease has come up yet, and if they plan to keep it for the village or to let MTA continue to control it. Did you guys get my email?
I did see the email on that one.
Oh, okay. Maybe that's why you didn't respond. Just like you're just...
Makes it harder. But no, I didn't, don't remember that email.
Oh, okay.
If you sign it again, we'll take a look.
Okay. All right. Do you have it off the top of your hand? Yeah, I think, and, okay, so I'll resend that email, that explains that. And then also, I was looking at the OZ train station, it looks like there might be a little more space, a stripe, a couple more spots, so I was hoping maybe you could DPW look over there and see if they can do it.
We actually have Greg, so you've been looking at, especially up by the top of the tennis court, by the tennis courts, there seems to be a natural two, maybe three spots. We're actually looking at a bunch of different things there. Just if there's anything like that, we can use it to pick up a few spots for, even as part of the, you know, even as a bigger project potentially, with the Mercy College pathway from the train station, if there could be a chance to open up some additional parking for that. Because we're going to be doing construction anyway to make the pathway, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, we can maybe do that.
That's moving forward, yeah. We already get the engineering class and everything. Mercy's been a good partner, very good partner on that.
That's great. That's very encouraging. And then one other question. In order to have our comments read into the record, they need to be in by Friday at noon. In order to have our comments read into the record, they need to be in by Friday at noon. Both the agenda and the backup isn't there yet, you don't know you have a comment. So, I was wondering, is there any chance to get like the agenda and the backup maybe online, like by Tuesday, I mean, by Thursday, like close of business, so we can at least have Friday morning to try to respond?
We can try to do that, yeah. Yeah, it's usually me holding it up, but yeah, we can try to get it on by Thursday, close of business.
That'd be great. Okay. And then for solar, if I want to request that the public hearing be held open, I should wait till the public hearing?
Sure. We'll let you open with that, since it's the public hearing, but yeah, sure.
Okay, thanks.
Consent agenda? Sorry, did you say there's another library? Yeah, it wouldn't be consent, though, so. Okay. We can do it last. Consent agenda? Go ahead and tell us.
Just the minutes, the minutes.
Good. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Next is the continuation of the public hearing considering the local law amendment with respect to solar energy equipment. Chris, do you want to give your appeal now?
Yeah.
I'm still Kristen Law, and I still live on West Clinton. Yeah, so, I am hoping that you will keep the solar energy equipment amendment public hearing open and defer a board vote tonight. And my reasons for this is I did share our guidelines and amendment with just one installer who had several comments about, I think it's significantly more restrictive than we want, than the board wanted it to be. I think the board was trying to encourage more solar. And the language, according to the installer, he literally said he wouldn't do business in the zip code with it the way it's written. It wouldn't be worth his time to spend, you know, to have to continue to go to the ARB, and maybe never even get approved at that point, because it's pretty nebulous language. It also has some errors as to the certification and some errors regarding, not errors, not errors. There's just no information out there from NISERTA and no information out there as far as certification. So, what we have there, we couldn't really do the way we have it written. So, and I also, in my letter to the board, I do offer to maybe put together a little committee with a couple of board members, and I could get the raw data as far as talk to like maybe two more installers and try to synthesize all the information and figure out, but to try to get some, you know, some that you can actually implement, basically.
Were the comments more on the guidelines or on the actual, you know, legislation itself?
A lot more on the guidelines.
Can you explain the certification issue, Kristen?
You know what?
Best your knowledge.
I got to tell you, it's just so in the weeds, it's so complicated, we could never get through it.
Certification of, or certification?
This is just, UL only certifies the equipment, not the installers, for example. I think that's guideline number one. But, I mean, it's not a deal, you're right.
Are you talking about the, that's not in the guideline, there's nothing in the guidelines about certifications. Is it the, is it the building department list of, the building department has a list of requirements? Maybe guess what you're meaning from?
It's in the guidelines that are connected to the amendment and the backup of the agenda for this meeting.
Yeah, I was a little bit confused by the certification question.
Yeah, I mean, basically.
I don't know if certification is discussed.
That's such, that's like one of about, literally, a dozen.
Close to what Mark asked about, and I just.
Oh, no, I understand. And I guess what I was saying is, I didn't, I don't think that we, I think that it needs to stay open, because for the discussion, if both information needs to be required, that's all I'm asking the board to do.
The guidelines are guidelines, so we can, we can update those as we need to. Yeah, right. So, I mean, to me, the importance, the biggest step now, right now, if someone applies to the ARB, their chances of getting a front-facing solar array installed are about zero. Just from what, Rick disagrees. That's a step, but from what I've heard from people, five, the five front-facing that there were, four of you guys were voted down, so. Two, okay. And there's one that was overturned by the ZBA, is there? Okay. Anyway.
And that's why we're here, because the ZBA said, please give, you know, please write some tighter language so that they're not even dated.
So, I would like to, personally, I'd like to get over the hurdle of actually adopting local law, and the guidelines we can tweak, because they're not, it's not local law. Those are things that we can change, you know, as a board. So, that's, you know, and we're always open to fixing those and making those better.
Well, I was looking at, tell me where you want to address this, because I was looking at the letter that.
You can sit down, and you can.
Sure.
And the letter that Nikki wrote to us, and I pulled a couple of items out that I just wanted to make sure we were comfortable with, or if we have to, you know, double-check the wording on certain things. So, do we want to do this? Let some more father comment come in and then talk about.
Sure.
Because I had like three or four, three or four items I pulled out of those two emails that I thought should be worth just.
Sure.
Absolutely.
We also have letters. Yeah, we have lots of letters, too. So, if anyone else wants to speak first, Ann?
Ann Atchison, 18 South Dutcher Street. I think the whole solar panel thing is complicated, probably not so complicated as immigration, but it is kind of important. And I kind of have followed the discussions, and I was one of the few people in the audience at one point when various ARB representatives were presenting their thoughts about it. What concerned me, which I believe is, one of the things in the actual code is the statement that the ZBA can, I don't know, I mean, the ARB, I don't know the exact words, can ask the person to look at other options if whatever they're doing is not acceptable to the ARB. The words are much more vague than that in the real thing. And then I was very disturbed to read, I know I don't believe everything you read, but in the enterprise, the reporter says, talks about this, that the property owner is required to demonstrate that every effort has been made to use materials, colors, and textures designed to harmonize with the structure. In practice, that could mean that the ARB would no longer accept a solar contractor's claim that he can only supply one type of solar panels. Under the new rules, it would be up to the homeowner to consider all other types of panels readily available on the market, even if that means hiring a different solar equipment supplier. The homeowner also might have to opt for a costlier system that's acceptable to the ARB. So, this is an absolute red flag, because it's not fair to put the onus on becoming an expert on the whole world of solar panels on some homeowner who just wants to save on their electricity bill. And back in the olden days, when I was a team leader at Regeneron, I was trained in project management by a very, very excellent guy from Procter &amp; Gamble, who used to work in the military. And he told me, okay, what are you going to do when the boss says, bring me a rock? And you go out, find a nice rock, bring it back. He says, no, I want one that's rounder. You go out, bring one that's rounder. He says, no, I actually thought maybe it should be granite. And the point was that, as a project manager, you have to define the world of whatever the task is in as much detail from the experts, the boss, the people who know it. So, I don't think the ARB are experts in solar panel technology. I think solar panel technology is happening very fast, changing very fast. So, I doubt that even the village engineer is probably not an expert in solar panels by any means. So, you need to put your resources into hiring a consultant or something that can hand the person, here's the world of different solar panel options, rather than letting the ARB say, no, we want you to find someone else, no, we want you to have a more expensive system and whatnot.
I think what we were trying to get at with that was, we've heard that some installers only have blue panels. So, we kind of countered that by saying, well, if that's, if they say, you know, you have a black roof and we only have, to make it even a crazier example, blue is a real example, if they only had orange panels, because those are the new ones, the ARB is in the right to say, well, is that the only ones you can have? And they say, well, this is the only one this manufacturer, or this installer uses. But that's what they can say, because typically, you think about every other project you have. If you have a contractor and you say, you know, we don't think that the bright orange roof makes sense, he can say, okay, I can use different materials. Often, the installers only have one type of.
Right. But if you, if you go out into the world, you decide you want to install a fence, you hire a fence contractor, the fence contractor has a certain world of fences, and even if you hire two, if you get two guys to come out, you make a decision, I like this guy, I like these fences, I'm going to put up a fence, the ARB says, okay, that's within the world of fences, you can. The whole idea of telling you that you have to do your due diligence about all these things that the paper said, maybe the paper's not right, but it sounded very detailed what the paper said. So, I felt like they were getting their information from some kind of watching the video or something that must have given them this idea. So, it's just not fair to put that kind of onus on, you have to have, you have to have got some consultant that you hire that can help the homeowner understand the world of solar panels and also help the ARB understand the world of solar panels.
The part that, you know, I don't know if the people in the audience have a copy of the proposed, but there's a section, section two, nine, twelve, that goes A, B, C, and I think what you're talking about is, the homeowner must demonstrate to the Board of Architectural Review that all reasonable options have been considered to achieve compliance with the solar energy equipment guidelines. That's where, as we responded, that was a fairly new section added after several iterations of this, and it was in response to the concern that a salesperson comes and says, this is what I have, this is all I have, but in commonly available at Lowe's or elsewhere, or from another salesperson, there might be something way more appropriate. And that was an attempt to make the onus on the homeowner. So, that seemed to make sense, rather than it in the hands of a salesperson.
Then you have to send them somewhere where they can find out that there are orange, blue, black, and white solar panels. How does they know? The salesman comes to their door, and what do they know? It's like anything that you're not an expert in. You don't, they, nobody asks you.
I'm not an expert in plumbing, though, but I can ask, you know, you don't have to tell me all the different types of plumbing I have, right? And so, it's like, I don't understand why.
You hire a plumber, and he decides to put plastic in, and the ARB wants copper. So, it's.
But I think that.
But the guidelines talk about, like, to a degree, it's a practical solar equipment, shall we use materials, colors, and textures designed to align with the structure, what's it affects? That's the part that we were trying to get to with. We heard that, you know, the guy's going to be the cheapest guy, he's going to come and say, I can put up solar for free, or whatever. To me, it's, we have to strike a balance somewhere, is, I think, what we're getting at. If, if, if you can't, there's no other, there's no, like, if a painter says, I only paint blue, and the ARB says, you can't have blue for whatever reason, you have to, I mean, it's not up to them to say, well, here's the other colors. You know, like, it's, some of it, and we also heard the other difference is that most of the solar applications, the homeowner's even involved, it's just the, the sales company comes before the ARB. So, it's like, the cheapest one, do as cheap as possible. So, it's like, it's a little bit different than other applications as well. But we thought that, you know, having the homeowner have to say, listen, you know, sorry, you know, A, B, C, solar, you know, you're turned up. And I think that we did debate this quite a bit. And it was, it was kind of a, we were more worried about them going, well, that's the only one I have. And then you might as well not even have a statute, you can put up anything you want. I think that was our issue. I'm not sure why solar would be different, that we have to, you know, then say, we can go see our solar expert, and they'll give you all the different arrays that are available. I think they have to do some work on there. I mean, it's, as you say, it's changing every, you know, I think that's why we also thought it was important to have guidelines and not everything being added to the code, because this is changing so quickly. And we, I can see five years from now, every, every house is going to have solar, you know, roofs that are just going to be.
Right, absolutely.
And that's what's going to change. And that's why we have guidelines and not, you know, it's not all the code.
So. Right, but the point is, the ARB gets to say, you haven't, you haven't considered enough options. So, how many options do I have to consider? Do I have to consider two, five, 10, 15?
Well, we do.
Said what's practicable.
Yeah, we do, we do want to give the ARB, I mean, if the guy says, well, I checked with this one guy, and that's it, that's, to me, then, because at the end of the day, the ZBA is going to say, you checked with one guy? That's not, you know, if you said, I checked with two other installers, and it's also the same?
That's a different story.
Yeah, I think it's different. And I think the, you know, the ARB is, I mean, I expect them to be fair, you know, they're all, take this very seriously. And, you know, to me, again, if you said, well, I checked with my one guy, and that's it, if you said, I checked with two other installers, one doesn't even work in Irvington because we're so onerous, because we've heard that, you know, that, then that's going to be judgment. And I think we did leave some of this open to judgment, because that's, that's part of it.
Precisely.
I mean, I understand, I definitely understand what you're saying. And, you know, there's, although, even if I said you could put up anything, you know, I still don't think that we'd be having to tell people about all the options that they have.
That's what Google's for. I mean, most people are going to do due diligence to some degree. But I think there is an issue with some low-ball installation, installers or installation companies, and, but it's one of those things that I do think that people who are really seriously considering this are probably going to do a certain amount of research. I don't know what to say about whether or not they're supposed to know the full range of technology available, but part of the problem is, if the guidelines are understood ahead of time, then it shouldn't become an issue, because it should be part of the discussion that they're looking at, you know, hey, what can you, what range of colors do you have? Top, you know, black or blue? Okay.
I'm wondering if, if this, this section C might drive out some poor installers. I mean, they look at this, so, I mean, I'm not saying it is, and I'm, you know, but it could be that someone says, wow, here in Irvington, you actually have, we have to think, you know, what's practicable, what's, what fits with this house? So, this is, this is a, it seems to me, a helpful piece. And if some installers fall out, maybe they're ones that should fall out.
May I push the mic?
Sure. You know, if somebody else wants to speak first, before they, otherwise, Chris, you're up.
Still, still. Yeah, that's what, that's exactly what I think, I think, we have a good chat, we're on the same page, I think, is reasonable is just too, too nebulous.
It's practicable.
And practicable also.
Or reasonable.
They're both in there. And I think it actually might work the other way, Connie. I think what it does is might actually drive out the good installers, because they'll just go somewhere else, because they have so much work, that they're not going to come here and waste their time before several, you know, at least the ARB discussing what's reasonable, what's practical. They don't need to do that. They can just go somewhere else. So, you're going to end up with the people who don't get work because they're not that good. And that can go on forever. What's reasonable and practical? How many, is it, is it two solar installers, or is it three, or maybe really it should be four? And who should it be? I think it's, I know we want the same thing, that's why, I'm not sure what to do here, because I know we just want to open up solar for really 80% of the village. I guess 20%, is that what the HD is? I think that's what's getting in our way. And I think we're trying to write language that works for 80% of the village and 20% of the village when they have mutually exclusive needs.
I actually think it's, I don't, I differ a little bit, I think we do want the same goal, but I think at the same time, as much as I want solar, I don't want sloppy solar that's zigzaggy and just saying anyone can put up anything. I think that that's not what we want. I think what we want is professionally installed, solid, you know, installations for a particular building. Because, again, I think that solar, if it's done right, looks great. It looks modern, it looks futuristic, it looks like you're, you know, all up to speed. If it's sloppy, and it's zigzaggy, and it's the completely wrong color, I think that's where, that's where at least I can, I understand the voice is saying it's ugly. Because I don't, if we're a well-installed installation, I can look at it all day happily. If it's zigzaggy and a completely wrong color, I can see it. And I think that's why we kind of put this check in. You know, and I think that, whether we pass it tonight or not, I think we'd be happy to meet with other installers and find out what they think of the guidelines. And if they, Larry shared the numbers of installations, or not installations, but the actual...
Approved permits.
Approved permits. Irvington's shockingly low compared to our neighbors. I mean, like, almost embarrassingly so.
I think they want that solarize program. I don't know if we're going to get too many people to participate if we keep this restrictive language in our...
The problem with...
It's not restrictive, actually, I guess it's the opposite, it's too wishy-washy.
The problem with the solarize program, it's actually nothing that the board did, because it's actually, has to have volunteers who run the program for the village. And at the time the solarize was being organized, no one in the village stepped forward to actually take on the role of being kind of the volunteer coordinators, organizers for the village.
I actually, um...
But if there's another opportunity down the road, do you think we would jump in?
I, oh, do you want to be an organizer?
Yeah, sure.
Then we have someone, I don't know the exact limitations and such, but it was at the time, we couldn't get anyone scared up that would be willing to take the, expend the time...
I was on the board at the time.
Although, I feel that if, you know, I've had three different installers come out to my house, and force I have to take a tree down or something. But it wasn't hard for me to Google "free solar in New York State," and boom, I had, you know, six different people emailing me. Like, it was almost, it was almost, it was like trying to buy a car. You sign up, "Oh, I want to take a look at that car and price it." Next thing you're getting emails from, you know, Long Island and New Jersey all the time. So to me, it's not, it's not a lack of potential installers, at least not when I looked into it, you know, over the summer again. So it's possible.
I mean, the guidelines, you've kind of got to line up now. They're, you know, they're scheduling now. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, but, you know, so I think that maybe solarize Westchester would help, but I don't think that, you know, it's, you know, we're not going to have anything done because of that. You know, and I think maybe that's going to be a follow-up, is whether we get, whether we pass it tonight or not, is following up with the installers to find out what we can do to make it, is it really the new guidelines that they're, they were proactively reading? I'm going to say probably not, but, you know, maybe that will be another new issue going forward.
And while you mentioned that they won't allow applications, why do you think that is?
No, yeah, I only...
Yeah, I was, I mean, because I was thinking, maybe it's expensive, so people thought, oh, they're going to wait for the next solarize. But then I was wondering if there's any, if you had any other thought? Like, if people had mentioned why they were, were... I mean, so, you, because I know that you want people to have solar, even if their houses face the south or southeast, and I do, if that's the front-street facing. And you're confident, you think to let this go the way it is, or...
I think so. I mean, I think...
I mean, I know there are lots of other people with other points, but...
Sure, but I think we've also had good conversations with the ARB, you know, definitely expressing the way that they still have a very important role in making sure that it's a well-done installation. So they're not, we're not, we could have just said, "You don't look at solar." That would have been a very easy option for us. And the ARB frankly might have been happy with that. But we thought that it was still important for them to have a role. We thought that we had to help define their role, to say that we, if you're always balancing between, you know, kind of appearance and free access to solar, we've kind of want to lean this way, if we had been leaning maybe a little the other way. You know, so I think that that's been a very clear conversation. I mean, we have two prominent ARB members here tonight. I think they've heard us pretty loud and clear. I think that the guidelines provide important controls that the ARB is still going to make sure are followed. So, you know, I think that that's, I think, for right now, until we hear kind of otherwise, either from installers or from applicants or whatever, I think this is kind of the right balance that we've kind of tried to strike after almost a year of working on this.
I got you. And did you bring it by other installers?
Totally on the process, again, when I was talking to them on my own. And they said, you know, it was kind of a funny conversation. They said, "Well, we talk to building inspectors more than read codes," so whatever that means. You know, because it was, I mean, again, it was a sales guy, right? So he's something like, "Don't worry about it," because he didn't know I was the mayor. He said, "Don't worry about it, we'll stop your building inspector. It doesn't take long." And then it was basically a Google Earth thing, and he said, "You have too much shade on your roof," or whatever, "you can only create some hot water." But we did have a tree come down, so maybe we can revisit it again. But, so, you know, again, salespeople are salespeople. So that's the other reason we want to have, the ARB have a role, because if every...
More trees in this community.
Exactly right. And bring the homeowner back, not just someone selling you something. You know, that, they're off, they're, they hope to make money out of it, right? So, you know, that's why we thought we had to put some checks and balances still in the system. Again, if it's too much, or if it's too little, then, you know, then we'll kind of, you know, kind of...
But if we don't get started, we're not going to be able to fix it.
Yeah, exactly right. That was all theory. So, yeah.
Right. I would just like to avoid having, right, and just, I just wanted to kind of avoid that sort of new trip legislation, like, we passed this, but then some poor residents are going to be tortured, and then we'll change it, because we'll realize that it's a problem. So I just thought, maybe we could just have it tighter to go through in the first place. So that's why I was asking for defer.
The guidelines are easy to tweak, though. That's a, you know, a meeting of the board.
Maybe the ARB can even shed some light on that, who are here tonight.
Q, ARB? Yeah, no, but I did not come to speak, but I feel like I should probably say a few words. So my name is Deborah Hargreaves, and I am one of the members of the ARB that is here tonight along with the chair. Just a couple of points. I feel like there's been some words and comments tonight to suggest that the ARB has denied many front-facing solar panel applications. And I just want to make it clear, because it is a public hearing, that out of the two years that I've served on the ARB, we've denied two. Just, this is, I'm not quite sure where this rumor started. I would say we approved at least five, but I look to Larry for some more information. We do not get many solar panel applications, and I can assure you, it's not because the ARB is turning our residents away, or scaring them off, or putting the fear of God in them, like, "Do not come before us," because we do not support solar energy. That is not the case. I think that the enterprise definitely misconstrued and somehow put information in there that, I don't know where it came from, but it certainly didn't come from the ARB. I want to make it clear, we support solar energy. We do not support any type of application that comes before us that contradicts what our charges, which is making sure that we follow Article 9, Chapter 9, rather, and we look to the character of the neighborhood. We did deny two applications, because they were not fitting with that neighborhood. The array was off. We look at color, we look at texture, we talk to the solar panel installer, and we do our job. So I really want to make that clear, that we are not an entity that is somehow against solar energy, and I feel like that's coming across tonight.
That's very helpful.
I also want to indicate that, in terms of how we got here, I'm not too sure. I mean, we really, because we've only denied two applications, I'm not even sure why we have guidelines. We spoke up at the beginning to indicate that you're somehow carving out and creating guidelines for one aspect, one installation, that we approve. And it complicates our job. We're not, we do not come to you asking for these guidelines, but we will apply them as you have written them. But it is, it is going to be a balancing act, like anything else. And if for some reason this group decides you want geothermal, and there's a piece of that equipment that's on the outside, and we have to somehow then also go out to all of the contractors and install geothermal to see if they have black, or brown, or silver equipment on the outside of the house, then we're going to have to deal with that as well. But by creating these guidelines, it does present more of a challenge to us than it did before, because I thought we were doing our job effectively beforehand, balancing like we do anything else that comes before us. Now we have guidelines, but if you approve them, we'll apply them.
I must have really short memory, because I think you're, I don't know, I feel like you're reinventing history, because the ZBA specifically, in response to certain other things, and not in response to the, necessarily, the front-facing array that they approved. But in other cases, the ARB said, "We want to have, we need to have guidelines that we can use that are more formalized, so that it gives better criteria of our decision process that the ZBA can look at." Because what they had said in many cases is the ARB seems arbitrary in its decision process. So one of those areas that we were looking at, you know, the historical district is a big thing, and there's some guidelines and whatever they become. But solar panels was the next one that seemed to be of the order of, "What criteria are you using?" And so that's why the...
I understand. I think that's fair enough. I mean, if it makes it clear for the ZBA to know that we apply...
Right, to residents.
...support to residents, then that's fine. But I just want to make clear, it didn't come from us, because we thought that we somehow needed these specific guidelines. I think we were doing our job, and now I think, yes, we can do our job more clearly so that the residents and the ZBA...
I think the residents need the guidelines, and probably the installers, they can see what's going to be expected of them.
I hope so, too.
Okay, thank you. I think Rick and the rest of the board as well, for all the hours and all the thought, and actually, all your input on this. I think it's much, it's much better than where we started. I think it's found that balance a little better than we otherwise would have had.
So can I just go through my list of a couple of things? Because I don't know, has everyone talked?
Yeah, the letters also.
Yeah.
I mean, the letters are, no, never. You want to see the letters quickly again, so that way that...
Are you going to do the mayor's mumble?
I will. Sorry, I don't want to do some of those. Some of them are pretty long. And unfortunately, I didn't highlight the important pieces of them. One is from Cheryl Brandywine. "We are ready to express our support for solar panels in our village, whether they are front-facing, rear-facing, side-facing, or otherwise. Our house is surrounded by homes with solar panels. We do not see them as unattractive. We see them as the promise of the earth's future. Arguments of solar panels are unattractive under the urgent need for renewable, sustainable, clean energies. Clearly, Irvington is the only village in the river town that does not form a participate in solarize Westchester. Going forward, we must do better. There is so much more we can do to promote solar green energy. Prices for solar panels are dropping. Numerous companies offer installation to lease or purchase them. Solar panels have become ubiquitous on homes, businesses, community centers, even highway signs. Stop Irvington, get fully on board." Get it on Blackout Street.
Sounds like you've got your liaison to solarize.
Yeah, exactly. Keep that name handy, Larry. Karen, Chris. The next one is from Christos Kiasos, and I'm sure I'm not saying that right. And Lauren Demico. "We're a young professional couple, moved to Irvington a couple of years ago from New York City. Our newborn son also here is a rented home. We chose Irvington because of outstanding schools, proximity to the city. We're pleased with our decision to move here and stay." Let's skip to the solar part. "We are fortunate to have a south-facing roof on the back of our house, ideal for a solar installation. We have a private tree-lined backyard where we spend most of the summer, and while our panels are clearly visible from our own deck, they're not visible from the front of the house. We, as well as our mike-minded friends, many of whom have lived in the city but are considering a move to Westchester, don't mind the look of the panels. In fact, they are a point of interest and prompt discussions on energy usage and conservation. Our monitoring system tells us we are producing more than we are using down to the minute, which helps us keep tabs on ourselves. Undoubtedly, this will be something our son will understand from a very young age, as the concept of energy conservation will be tangibly learned through daily practice. We agree that aesthetics should be considered in the evaluation of a solar array. Where a possible symmetrical array should be preferred to unbalanced installations and streamlined look should be the goal. However, we strongly oppose rules interfering with residents' ability to invest in their properties and the environment. The current and future value of villagers' properties is dependent on the next generation of residents. We can assure you that these future residents are more eco-conscious than ever before. Aesthetics, including what is and what isn't deemed attractive, are subjective. Benefits, including economic and environmental attributes, are quantifiable and objective. It's a disservice to the village residents to deny them material, economic, and environmental benefits based on subjective and controversial interpretation." It goes on, basically, it's, very well written. Suzie Frommer writes, "I agree with you, front-facing, side..." This was in response to my, from the mayor's. "I agree with you, front-facing, side-facing, whatever. Solar is important. It's ridiculous, the limited for aesthetic reasons. My poor neighbors across the cul-de-sac on Dogwood had such problems getting their approval, though they finally did. I lived directly at their house, had no problems with it, was glad they had a Ford to, to fight the lengthy fight. I don't think I can make the meeting on Monday, but wanted to reach out with my views. Let me know if there's anything else I need to do." Ken Kissel, who owns LiveWire, he says, he talks about his home. He sent a picture. "His 26 panels in the spring iron credits from electricity I'm producing. Last summer, running two central air conditionings, blah, blah, blah. So many benefits adding solar, economic, environmental. I hope the board and ARB make it easy for residents to have it installed." Bill Bockelman kind of talked about, "My understanding is many homers are abrogating themselves to 20-year agreements when they install solar panels. In five years, it's possible to have any obsolete equipment on the roof with 15 years remaining on their agreements." Kind of warning that Elon Musk is, he had a whole other section about Elon Musk and Tesla making nice solar panels. But he was supportive of those, but he just didn't want people to get locked in to long contracts. Those were the letters. So I think we should, when we have Rick go, then we'll go again. Frank, Rick, or anyone else? Just wanted to follow up on the issue of the two declines, both of which, both presentations were made by installers. And I use that word, "installers," because I think we're using the word installer as a representative or a good representative of a solar company. It shouldn't be misconstrued as that. It should be somebody from the company, not the installer, because the installer is thinking one way. You know, he's thinking about getting installed or getting out. But that's been our, at least, that's what we've seen from the people that have come for, in front of us. Actually, the owner and the solar company didn't get into the one decline that we had until it went to the ZBA. So, and they made a, you know, a logical and credible presentation to the ZBA. Just wanted to clarify that. Great. And Larry just gave, the last couple of days, we've gotten a lot of, a lot of feedback. There were one, two, three, four, five, six letters in support. There was a letter from Apoa, asking all their residents to chime in on it. They too did. They both supported it. Nikki sent some recommendations, and Chris also sent some recommendations. So I think Nikki's going to speak, and I know her, so... But, yeah, those are the other letters. So we'll put those in the official record. Anybody else want to speak? Otherwise, Mark's there.
Well, okay, I just wanted to verify some things as we've gone through this. I was not clear on Chris's, most of the emails we received actually were, you know, again, were more kind of supportive informational type stuff. There were only a couple that came in with very specific points, and so that's what I wanted to talk about. Installer certification or unit cert, I wasn't clear what the certification issue was, so if you could try to figure out what...
I can send that.
Figure out what that's about, because if it's electrical certifications or whatever, all of that is basically whatever the state requires.
It is, it's just that they, the UL that you say are going to certify the installers really only certify the equipment, not the installers. That's all. But I'll just send it to you, because that's not part of the, of the slative language style.
Okay, so then the next thing is, the issue about net metering, as far as I can tell, we're not actually restricting any kind of net metering. It allows for that, as far as I understood, from reading the code.
What do you mean by net metering, Mark?
Well, there's a section, I think it was, I want to say it's, if this is, if it's in front of me.
Well, I'm asking you what you mean by net metering.
That's the metering that you can actually say, you know, it keeps track of giving you credit for excess using energy or producing energy.
Yes, definitely.
And you, it seems to be allowed.
Well, I don't know if this is what, I think this might have been what Nikki was getting at. It says that the solar energy equipment, no, is allowed, it already is, but it just clarifies that it's allowed as a use in the village. But it specifies for use by the owners, lesses, tenants, residents, or other occupants of the premises.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a second issue. I haven't gotten to Nikki's point. We're still talking about...
Oh, okay. Let me just finish this off. "Nothing contained in this provision shall be construed to prohibit the sale of excess power through a net billing or similar program in accordance with the New York Public Service Law, similar in New York State."
Right. In other words, we're not imposing limits on any kind of revenue definition or anything else that might be going on between the utility and the owner of the array, or the leesee of the power coming from the array. As far as I understand, whatever the PSC comes up with and ConEd allows, that's, you know, we're not blocking any of that in terms of our code.
Right. I think this, all this provision does basically is you can't build a solar farm just to have solar.
That's the only thing in terms of.
It has to be connected to your house.
It has to be for your house. If you ended up generating credits, that's fantastic.
So, anyway, so that was the other one, I know that Chris was asking about, and finally.
That's from the installer, though. That wasn't from me. He was saying that our language applies in the face of NISERTA language, so I can send you what he said. That's all where it says the installer said this. I didn't say it, because I don't know anything about that.
Your letter reported it.
Oh, right. I was quoting.
So anyways, the point is that it.
Nikki might know better, though.
It doesn't appear, as far as I can see, we're not blocking any sort of thing, except for a very specific case, which was something I was going to get back to. The final thing was, there was concern about arbitrary screening requirements. But I have to just point out that in site development planning through the planning board, the screening requirements are arbitrary in the sense of they're allowed to specify and have the applicant agree to whatever screening is determined to be required, to be sufficient. And that's so variable based on any kind of condition of the site or the installation, that it would be very hard to set one specific screening guideline.
And again, that's from the installer. That's, that's, that's what the installer said now.
It sounds like the installer hasn't been dealing with planning boards.
No, but I'm just quoting the installer. I think his point, I construe his point to me, screening from a roof, solar panel, like, that's going to be pretty hard to do. You're going to have to have 20-foot trees.
We've already discussed that. The screening is also, I think.
Again, that was just from, you know, that was from the installer. Those are not my words. My point was just to say that installers have an issue with it, and could we leave it open to investigate these?
I thought that the language in it was actually something in the effect, where's the screen?
The screen is number two on the guidelines, Mark.
Thank you.
And then there's also a screening provision for freestanding equipment, which is probably not going to come up much, but that's in 6C.
Right. I mean, I know we've had that. I always, yeah, I don't know what to say. I mean, I always, I guess mentally insert to greatest extent practicable, but it doesn't say that there, so I suppose that could be an issue that.
It does to the, oh, wait a minute. I thought it did say it somewhere.
No, it says that on the next.
We talked about that.
It doesn't say it for screening. It says it minimizes its visibility from the surrounding properties and public rights away while maintaining viability and functional integrity. So, well, that's not quite the same, because, you know, again, is it practicable to require 20-foot trees to screen an array from somewhere? Or do you just say, you know, what, you're going to do the best you can do, and there's a cost constraint on screening? This one is, depends on how it's interpreted. I mean, I would be, if this is kept open, I would be into discussing whether or not that should be the greatest extent practicable.
I mean, if you, if the board agrees, I mean, that's not a change that's going to require you renew public hearing.
Right, because it's in.
Because that's certainly within this. You could, you could adopt the guidelines with the amendment that two begins with "to the greatest extent practicable." I don't think that.
I mean, that's how I was reading it, you know, all the time, but.
Yeah, we can add that.
It's not there, but if the board all wants, you could do that, and.
Because that way, you can't, you have an out for not asking for a unreasonable kind of planting, you know. Bringing in 20, 25-foot trees is expensive and probably not the best.
I'm not opposed to putting that in since it's an easy fix, but I would say that there is a point where we're, where we have to assume that the ARB has common sense in the brain, that they will read these guidelines not to require 40-foot trees. You know, that there's, we.
You would imagine.
We would imagine, and I think that we, we've spent a lot of time talking about a reasonable balance here, and we definitely, part of the changes we made was to make sure that the ARB had guidelines that gave them some say and influence in this inability to say yes, no, although it was different than the usual guidelines. But I think this is, let's put it in if that makes everybody happy.
Well, it has been, I, the only thing that I brought it up at all is because it has been mentioned several times in public comments.
Okay, so let's put it in. It's an easy fix.
It seems like an easy, right. So in terms of what I read out of Nikki's letter, there were two areas, and I think the first one was this kind of thing about, and Marianne read it directly, the whole thing about limiting the, it's scattered throughout the language of the code, but solar energy equipment allowed, provided it is used only to provide power for use by owners, lesses, tenants, residents, or other occupants of the premises on which it is erected. So it's definitely something that cannot be like a, mentally, I'm thinking of sort of like a small microgrid or an area power that you could put up an array on one building at power of three or four buildings from it. Let's say you could put it up on one of the main street buildings behind the parapet, and it had a large enough roof area that a couple of buildings could go in to the project. So we disallow that. I'm not sure if I'm getting the, is that sort of the implication of what you were saying in your letter?
Want me to speak now?
Sure.
I just want to understand this better, so that.
So Nikki Carrington, 57 Hill, Cypress. So the letter that you're discussing now was my most recent letter of last week, based on the revised law and guidelines. So with respect specifically to the issue of shared solar. So as it says in my letter, the way you have worded it allows net metering, allows net billing the credit according to the person who owns the building, or, you know, is a tenant of the building. As I pointed out in the letter, there is a new program of NISERTA called Community Shared Solar. And there are, this has just been beginning, you know, last year. There's one project I know of in northern Westchester so far, and that is a program that allows there to be a project of a solar installation on a, on a building or a property. And shares of that installation go to individuals who cannot otherwise have solar on their own property. And so it's, it's a way to share a solar system and the benefits of a solar system. And I'm not a lawyer, but it would seem to me that the wording of your law as you have it would preclude that type of shared, community shared solar project.
So they get a benefit, in other words, they get power, they essentially are getting power from that array, or something.
They're getting the, the credit on their own utility bill from that, from the power generated on that project, which is not on their own building. And there is a lot of interest in these projects, as you can imagine, and they're really just starting, so we.
But they're really just starting, as you.
They're really just starting. They don't really have the experience of it.
And so forth, you said there was just one community with.
There's one project I know of in Westchester County, but there may be more that I don't know of. But it's really been, been just, NISERTA just, NISERTA and PSC just created this, the ability to have this kind of project last year. And, you know, there's still a lot of kinks being worked out. But I would hate to see your law enacted that would preclude this type of shared project.
Could you explain one little bit of it? I know we don't want to talk too much about this, but do you mean that, as an example, Dowslane School could have solar panels and generate a lot of energy? And would it be that other properties near there would be able to get reductions in their energy bills because of that? Are they physically connected in any way?
No, they're not physically connected. You don't even have to be.
Nearby.
Geographically nearby.
So it's just you sign up to be.
Right.
Right, let me scroll up. Yeah, okay. All right, I get it.
So, it could be anybody. I mean, you just have to enter into the agreement that makes you basically a shareholder in that solar project.
Think about, for just a moment, it's conceptually, you know, when someone gets green power, you know, solar or hydro or wind and solar, you're not actually getting a wire from that wind farm. You're getting a, you know, basically, effectively a credit into the pool of electricity that's on the network.
I got it. I got it. Okay.
So potentially, we'd be excluding someone for building that, but not for participating in it, if it was, you know, in.
They wouldn't build it, because they couldn't, they couldn't create a, a share structure, you know, like a whatever, a, it's not a condo. What do you call it? I guess you.
Your co-op.
A co-op, you're selling shares.
Yeah, it's kind of like a co-op.
Yeah, that's the closest model I've got.
So that type of project could not exist in Irvington. So I just, I would respectfully suggest that you have somebody look at that who can tell you whether that language does that and whether that's what you, as a board, want.
I think it's interesting, because I have not heard of this, and I think, you know, like, there are cases in Irvington where I can see that could be a benefit of control, the spread, you know, of solar arrays on every building, especially when you have larger apartment buildings or whatever. I mean, so I could see that someone might be able to create a business model that makes sense and would be the benefit to the community. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Does it have a name? Is it called a share? Did you give it a name?
Well, yes, I sent you the link to the NISERTA page. Community shared solar is one of the ways it's referred to. There are some other phrases used sometimes. Do you want me to wait for you guys to have your other discussion before I make other comments?
Let me just ask you one question. Are we talking about individual homes, one-family homes? That are generating the ability to have power that can then be shared, or are these larger?
No, they'll be larger, and I'm not saying that Irvington even necessarily has the type of properties that would have that.
Right now, if it's referring to, to, you know, section 224 AP of the zoning code, which is one-family residence.
Yeah, but it also applies in the business district, Marianne, and the railroad district.
Where there might be larger buildings. And larger apartment buildings are perfect for this kind of thing, I suppose.
If someone came through, you know, and said, you know, whatever, think you're doing this, we can, you know, this is, to me, this is, yeah, if it's a business, they wouldn't be kind of shy in asking us to adjust our code.
Right, and what, this, pardon me for repeating, it's not an anomaly in this room, but that if we try to anticipate everything that might happen in the future, we're going to hold any meaningful change hostage. We can, we have a proposed law, we have guidelines. We're, you know, relatively small community. We're a small board. We can look at, you know, these, you know, at one point during the discussion was, well, why do anything at all if Tels is going to develop this in five years? Well, maybe, you know, but do we want to, like, do nothing until we wait to see what, how this might play out, when we can easily address it if it does?
Well, this exists now. This, this type of project, the capacity for it exists now, so that's something in the future. And what are you, I'm not really understanding what you're trying to achieve with the language that you currently have. What are you trying to avoid? What are you trying to prevent with this wording?
I think, I think it was just kind of the solar farm that's being erected, which, you know, I think that that was, you know, people that were just going to set up solar arrays to sell electricity, I think, was the thought process, thinking that we should keep this right now.
That's kind of precisely what this.
Wouldn't you put a line?
How big is too big, and how small is, is small enough?
Right, and see, we don't.
I think that was the thought, that we, this was, I think we're focusing on residential applications of solar as opposed to commercial applications of solar with this law. Because we haven't had, because we haven't had any commercial applications.
Well, I mean, the big question then, I mean, based on, especially with what Larry was just saying, it's like, well, how much excess capacity is, could you allow in a residential structure? I mean, obviously, you know.
Well, in, under net metering law, with, you know, an individual residential building, a single-family home, say, or, you know, actually, it's up to a four-family home, but, but one, one building, you cannot get the NISERTA incentive for, for way more, for a much larger system than would be used by the residents of that building. And I forget what the fraction is. It's like 110% would be the maximum, because NISERTA is not interested in having everybody be a net producer the way they do in, say, Germany with, you know, their legislature, their, their type of regulation. So, you know, you're not going to have that. You're not going to have people, you know, covering their building with solar panels and selling the excess back. It doesn't work that way. Net metering only really gives you credit against your own use. But this type of shared solar, you know, could allow residents of Irvington to benefit from the production of solar energy somewhere in Irvington, but not necessarily on their, on their own property.
So let me just ask you one, just, this thought occurred to me. What sets the limitation? I mean, could someone have set up an array in Dobbs Ferry and sell to, sell shares, whatever, to Irvington residents? In other words, is it.
Yes, so, I mean, for example, I know a Dobbs Ferry resident who is a participant, has a share in a community share, one of the, the one that I mentioned in northern Westchester.
Okay, so my feeling is, with knowing that, my feeling is kind of like, let's wait until someone comes and proposes it, it needs a variance that they'll come before the board, I suppose.
But also from what you're saying, if there's somebody from Dobbs Ferry, then presumably somebody from Irvington could buy into a share in one of these.
Precisely.
Elsewhere, which would bother our pretty little heads not at all. Wouldn't affect, you know, our, you know, our code or any required approval under our code. Just like joining a food company.
And I guess if someone's going to build one of these, it's going to be a big commercial, you know, organization that's going to, you know, be happy to send their attorney here to ask us to adjust our code to allow it, I guess. You know what I mean? Like if it's, you know, New York's solar is a great company, and they'll have known this, they'll, they'll check our code, and they'll say, hey, we need to, we need you to change your, you know, your legislation.
Maybe, or maybe they'll just go to the other municipalities that don't have it.
Well, they're going to have to have someone that they can, that's, I mean, I'm sorry, no, it's, but they have to have a willing roof, you know what I mean? They have to have some, that someone's going to lease them the space, or, or maybe, you know, maybe it's something like the Astor Buck people or whatever, whatever their proper corporate name is, sorry, Bill and Jeff. Maybe they decide that they should have an array on top of one of their buildings and, and sell energy out beyond their usage.
Here we have a cell tower.
So what, so what would they do in that case? Would they?
Well, they would have to come and, but I would think.
Ask you to change that?
I think in this case, for this particular, yeah, what else? Because it wouldn't be approvable any other way. But I guess my question is, I just want to throw out one other thing, and you're probably going to get to this. The other thing you brought up in your email was the fee structure. So I wanted to better understand what the fee, fee structure is. My understanding was it was based on having the village looked at other villages and looked at their fee structure. So, and your point was they seemed excessively expensive.
It does. It seems high to me. Anything that involves a fee over about $500 for, for an average-sized system on a single-family home seems high to me.
And averages 10, 15,000 kilovatts? What would you say is an average?
Oh, no, the average would be more like a seven, seven and a half.
So it's not full, full usage? It's, I mean, that.
So the five, or like, was it 385?
Then it would be 635, practically plus 85.
So for example, Dobbs Ferry's fee structure, which I sent you, at least that's what it was last year. I don't know if they updated it. Maybe, maybe Larry has new information from other river towns, but.
And we not, I don't think the fee change would be a major change, right? A material change that we'd have to notice this? We just said it was, you know, 85, keep that application fee, then made it like 250, and then made it 450 or something like that.
Yeah, since it's going down, I don't think you have to.
Larry, how did these numbers come up?
I don't have the background information on it. All I know is that the other. The main, the main point of the change was to change the structure of the way the fee was being charged, because they were missing out on the value component that is normally used as a measure for charging a building permit fee, so it was going to a kilowatt structure. The, the other communities, I was told, are either considering or have implemented a similar structure, so that we weren't missing out on those value installations.
I totally understand the desire to not miss the fee on leased systems. I totally understand that, and I support that. But I think that the fee structure, if you want to encourage solar in the village, I think the fee structure should be lower rather than higher, because it, especially, you know, with, you know, you had added on to that the, you know, the application fee and the completion fee, which. the completion fee, which Hastings does not, for example. So, anyway, I just, if you want, if your objective is to encourage solar, then I would just recommend that you try to bring the fees down a little bit.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to lowering the, the smaller ones.
On the smaller, on the smaller end.
Make it 200 instead of 300, 450 instead of 550.
Yep.
And just to, can I just go back to your community, community shared solar?
Sorry, can I, is that, are those the only changes?
I think, I mean, I think for the larger systems.
Leave them the same?
Yeah, I just figured you.
No, it's all right.
Yeah, I think that those, for the smaller systems, that covers up the 10 kilowatts.
Okay.
So, we're dropping that down to 450?
450, yeah.
And we're dropping the 300 down to 200?
200 for the smallest one.
And what about the 800?
Should we just make that 700?
Yeah. Matter of fact, put one in, we'll pay you.
All right. All right. Maybe I'm, I'm misreading this section, and maybe this is too simple to work, but this community shared solar, if, if we made under Section 59, where we start with this net billing section, is it possible to carve out allowing that eventuality just by putting in, somewhere in that sentence, allowing community shared solar? I don't know. Nothing contained in this provisions shall be construed to prohibit the sale of excess power through a community shared solar? Somewhere in there?
Isn't it a similar program?
Isn't it a similar program?
Net bill or similar program?
No.
No.
She's saying no, yeah.
Because right now, our code doesn't even allow the structure to be built that could then have shares sold for it. That's the problem.
Because it has to be used on, on the premises. You can sell back the excess, but that's it. Has to be, has to be used on the premises.
If, if it's an idea that it's not a major change, and nobody has an objection to it, then figuring out the wording in it might just be somewhere in that paragraph, but that's.
Well, except I think that's a bigger change.
Okay.
I'd be happy to put that in.
I think that's a big, that's, that's a bigger change.
But we could still.
And those other changes that you, were certainly within what's there now, that's actually kind of a problem. I mean, I'm not saying you can't do it, but I would say that that's a significant enough change, you could have to renotice it.
And we could amend it later, when it's because.
We can also figure out the exact language, so it's net program and not just someone building a solar farm to, you know, make profits or something.
So, in general, it's an idea you guys like to?
Sure. I mean, I think it's, I think it's very limited in scope. I'm just saying that. The reason why it's in Northern Westchester is it's a huge field, that's easy to sell a lot. If it happened here, I honestly think that if someone had proposed it here, we would be more than happy.
Well, as, as Nikki said, it might be, you know, walk away, go somewhere else.
Yeah, but I still don't think that.
So, if it were easy, I was going to say, just do it. If it's more complicated and it's renoticed, then, and if the.
Well, how much, how much of a delay are we talking about?
I don't know.
Put some language in there. I mean, what's renoticing? What's the minimum renotice? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just another.
We have to hold it over again. And it seems every time we do this, we're going to find, you know, two other things that change.
But so far, it's been, they have, it's actually been helpful to.
No, I agree. I agree 100%, but I think we can also continue and hear you.
Okay.
It could be noticed in time for the next meeting, but the next meeting is, right, the President's say, and.
Yes, President's.
You're on your.
Well, that's, hey, that gives you.
March, so March 6th is the date.
I don't see the meeting. You guys talk all day long.
We can just note for it while Brian, while the mouse is away, the cat is away.
So, it's either February 22nd or March 6th. I mean, you guys, I mean, do you guys feel strongly enough that it's a bad code down without that one provision?
No. No, but what I like, though, is it also puts, I mean, you're, I'm being anal here, I know. But it allows us to adjust the fee structure.
We can do that tonight. We could do that now.
I understand that.
It's a question, do we want to hold this over yet one more time in order to wrap language for this, this, it does exist, but where there's.
We could also pass this and then renotice it and put that one thing in.
Yes, how about that? We can do that, right?
We'd have to make a public, new public hearing, so we have, it would hold us up to the 7th, I guess, for that.
But then it would only be on that particular issue. We could pass the rest of this, which we've been working on for.
Truth.
Are we going to commit to that? Or are we just going to let it fall off to the edge, and then it's going to be something that won't happen?
It's up to you guys. If you want to have it in, I don't, I don't object to it. Again, there's not many great spots in Irvington, but it might be whatnot included, so if you want to work in language, we can.
Well, so, no, somebody else is going to have to give me language. I really don't get this stuff.
Okay.
Somebody provides a language, I'll put it into.
Nikki, can you potentially write a exception for that, or find language that allowed it somewhere else?
I'm not necessarily saying, Nikki, Mark, you seem to understand.
I understand, I don't know how I word it.
No, no, don't, just, it doesn't have to be necessarily our flu, just word it and send it to me, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll put it in this.
We could work on it together. You can take a shot.
I don't mean draft the statute, it's just.
Explain what the heck we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can put it on the paper, and you can edit it or vice versa.
Yeah, I know. Speak with Nikki to be sure that.
I'm sad Nikki is a front person.
Do you have a reference to, somewhere on the NYSERDA or PSC website?
Yes, I sent you a link in the email. And also, I know I've said this before, but I, you know, I want to remind the board that you have a resource in Jessica Barter of Pace Law, Land Use Law Center, who has, for the last year and a half or so, been conducting a project on municipal solar law, and I know, I've heard perhaps that some of you don't want to necessarily hear what they think, but since it's free and they have the expertise, I don't see what you have to lose by having her, even just asking her this question, you know, this technical question of, of that. Because they've been working, for example, with the Village of Scarsdale on their solar law provisions, and it's a resource that, that they have made available to all municipalities in Westchester. Could I just address the, the question of the screening that was discussed earlier?
My pleasure.
And I know I, I said this in my verbal comments at the first public hearing, this being the third one. I, I do think that still, that the screening issue is still problematic, because it is ambiguous, and I understand the rationale for a ground-mounted set, system, but I find it really difficult to envision what reasonable screening for a rooftop system would mean. That would not be prohibitively expensive. And I, I think if you really want to include that as a guideline, I, I think it needs debate made a lot more clear, because I agree with Chris that this is, you know, the wording of this and the, what, what may appear to be unreasonable barriers, even though, you know, I do agree that, you know, the ARB has common sense and, and, you know, would, would not be unreasonable, but the way this is worded, the way these guidelines are worded with, with, about things like, like screening, I think would be unappealing to, to installers.
But we just, we just changed that. We said we were going to add language about the, that we add the phrase.
To the greatest extent.
To the greatest extent possible. So, we're not talking about 30-foot trees.
With due respect, I don't think adding the words "to the greatest extent practicable or possible" really helps that much, because I, I, I think it's really, you know, subjective and open to interpretation. Like, what is practical? Practical?
That's why we have an ARB, to apply the guidelines to a particular proposal.
Again, I, I understand it from the point of view of, like, a swimming pool, you know, or a ground-mounted system, screening, you know, but how are, what kind of reasonable practical screening are you going to, is the ARB going to request and say, you know, to the homeowner, you can't have your system unless you, you know, put up screening for, you know, a system that's 30 feet off the ground? I just, I don't get it. And, and I think installers, you know, good installers as well as bad installers, will look at that and go, I'm not spending my company's money and time to send people to one, maybe two, maybe three ARB meetings to work out, you know, this kind of screening. I, you know, I have, because I'm in, in the business, because I work for Solarized Westchester, I've really made every effort to, to try to take a balanced approach to this, and I understand your desire to, to protect aesthetic characteristics of, of the village. This, the screening thing does not seem reasonable to me.
Do we need more for ground, or ground installed as opposed to, I mean, because I can't, I mean, we, I think we use, the examples we used were like, if there's something that's there already, you should try to keep it if you can. That was where we were thinking about then installing, like, screening. We talked about, like, you know, if you can put it somewhere that's, you know, screened, that's better than not putting it somewhere, you know, putting it where it's not screened. So, it's not, it's not like we, it's not like we wanted them to erect things to screen it on the roof, because it's not, it's not practical, so it's, I mean, I mean, I mean, I'll just put something in, except if something exists already that helps screen it on the roof or something like, you know, to me, it's, it's almost like, we don't want people to tear things down if it's going to screen it, and I think it's really, for me, it is on the, if it's installed on the ground, is where you want to have more screening. So, it's, you know, to me, there's not so many practical things to screen it on the roof.
I very respectfully suggest, we've been discussing this for quite some time. I think we need to either decide whether we're voting on the basic law tonight or putting it over yet again.
You can change the guidelines, as I understood you saying that the guidelines can change.
And we can modify the, the provision of the code as well, right? It would be easier, but what we would.
I mean, you got, you got, I mean.
We already have three or four changes queued up and based on this conversation, so. I mean, I personally, I don't see the problem of waiting another week to do, another meeting to do it, but if everyone else is in.
I'm just afraid next week, we're not going to do it, and then the week after that.
Right, there's always going to be yet one more thing.
We can always make this better.
Yes, we can always make it better.
And we should, we continue to make it better, and that's why, one of the reasons we have guidelines.
But meanwhile, I'm not that there's 400 people standing in line to get, but we don't have anything that adjusts this, and we've been at this for quite some time. So, you know, I might personally would be in favor of let's vote on it tonight, but y'all decide, but let's, I think we do need to finish this discussion, we have less than we need to.
So, to you guys, if you guys want to hold it over, if the majority must have held it over, we can hold it over, but.
I don't see the problem in waiting and clearing up the language in a couple places, but, you know, it's just that I don't see, I don't, if we're so sure that we're going to have a problem passing this, then we're not going to have a problem passing.
Can I make a suggestion? You have two things. You close the public hearing if you're, two possibilities. One is close the public hearing. If someone would like to do that, you make a motion to do it, someone can second it, and you could vote on it. If it doesn't close, it doesn't close, then we keep it open, make changes, whatever, but just, that's, right?
You can also, if the concern is one more thing and one more thing, is close the public hearing, make the changes the board wants, and then vote the next.
That's what I'm saying, that's.
Right.
That's, that's, to me, is, sounds reasonable.
Yes, that's a reasonable.
Saying that we can stop further input, queue up the changes, and go forward.
Right, so we're closing the public hearing, but we'll keep it, but we will.
But I'll throw in a new draft for the next meeting.
But we wouldn't need another public hearing for the next draft?
Not a problem, well, we might, yeah.
So, that's why I see that.
I mean, you don't want.
You started a new public hearing with the old.
No, no, oh, I see what you mean here. Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, let's see what we change.
I mean, the guidelines.
Oh, well, no, if you're going to make the change about that sharing, you know, the community shared thing, that, that you do need a public hearing on.
So, what about the screening issue? What are we going to do about this? Because this has come up more than, now, we've had at least three people and possibly more come to us and say, the way it's written for rooftop arrays, see, if.
Can I make a suggestion on that? That I think, I don't think change is the meaning of it, but eliminates that, what's the issue? Because there is a separate provision for screening for ground mounted.
Right, right.
It's in the ground mounted. So, if you said, "To the greatest extent practicable, equipment shall be installed in a manner that minimizes its visibility from surrounding properties," I think it's, you're still going to accomplish the same thing, and so that if, if what you want is, as Brian was suggesting, screening that remains, maybe a cornice or something that remains, then that would not, and, and the person wants to take it off, you know, so they get more sun, that would not be doing it in a manner that minimizes.
To take up the worst screen.
So, I think you could take out the, and it doesn't, I don't think it affects it very much. It certainly would, would achieve the same purpose, I think the board.
But we do want the grant.
The ground out to December.
No, I'm not, hold on, hold on, let me be, everything that's not on the roof, i.e. the, the circuit breaker and the inverter, whatever the, whatever the electronic equipment that's actually typically mounted on the side of the house, that was included in this equipment. In other words, the equipment was including not only what was on the roof, but what was on the, you know, all the other associated stuff that converts the DC into AC, you know, the inverter. So, the point is, and, and the safety circuit equipment, circuit breaker and so forth, that equipment we do, we mentioned, should be, where do we mention it?
It's number five. All solar energy equipment other than the collective shall be located within the house or on the side or rear of the building. Forget to the maximum extent.
Right, so it's five, so we don't mention screening there at that point, so if we're, if we're okay with that, that we don't care if it's in the rear of the house or something. But in general, we don't typically have exceptions for equipment screening, like in a planning board, right? I mean, if they think it's need screening, it needs screening, even if it's in the rear of the house. So, that's the only problem, but we're, we're doing something a little abnormal here, unless we're just saying, well, it's up against the side of the house, and who cares?
Well, if you, if you can, if you can sign, you can, but that stuff should be screened.
Well.
What was the suggestion to move to close the public hearing and?
Well, I was only saying, if, if some are interested in moving on and voting on what you have now with the changes, the, the fee change that I think was discussed, that would not trigger a new notice provision, right? Then those so inclined could make a motion and second and vote on it, if it's secondary. If not, then you're stuck with.
So, are we also making the screen, taking that out from the guidelines?
I don't know.
And adding to the greatest extent.
Yeah, because the guidelines we could change, I think, with that. So, I'll, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
I feel, no, I'm not, I'm not going to be in favor, because I feel like we're just being lackadaisical. I want to see, I want to actually understand what the list of changes we've agreed to tonight is.
So, I think it was, it was the fees, lowering the fees.
Okay.
Taking out the word "at screens" and putting in "to the greatest extent practical" before it was just equipment.
Does it even need that at that point? Okay.
Sure, yeah.
Sure, sure, it's useful, okay.
Those are the changes.
And so, the only thing that we're not addressing is this, this condo power thing, which we can go back on.
Which I think we, we are going to draft, and we can.
Okay.
Open a public hearing.
I'm keen with that, that's fine.
So, 4-1. So, that was the S.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry, okay.
Okay.
So, that was to close the hearing. Are you voting on it?
Yeah, yes, I'll read the resolution. Resolve to adopt a local law mainly the Irvington Code with respect to solar energy equipment, whereas adoption of the local law and solar equipment guidelines are an unlisted action under the United, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and the Board of Trustees has determined that such a dash will have no environmental impacts, now therefore.
How negative and.
No, it's negative.
Did I leave that one word out?
I guess so.
Sorry. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that a negative declaration or secret be issued, and be further resolved to adopt a solar energy equipment guidelines dated January nineteen twenty seventeen. I'll make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
I'll, can I vote? I'll, I'll later afternoon adopt instead of tomorrow.
Sorry, did you kind of go, no?
No.
Thank you. Discontinue, I'll, I'll make a motion to open a hearing, discuss the discontinuance of a paper street running from Hermits Road to Hareman Road. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, this will only be three seconds. This is a resolution to discontinue a paper road, it's a road that only appears on certain maps, it runs from Hermits Road to Hareman Road, you never would have seen because it's not there. To the best of our knowledge, it's never been used as a road, and by the end of this week, it's going to be entirely on village-owned property, and we're going to close on property this week. Um, therefore, it serves no use and should be demapped.
It goes through the middle of the woods, right?
No, it goes to Hareman Road, it goes through the woods.
Yeah.
From Hermits Road to Hareman Road. Only on map.
We get to read again, this is my voice. Whereas certain filed maps show a paper road running from the southern end of Hermits Road to Hareman Road. Oh, wait, we can't, we have to open the public hearing.
Oh.
Yeah, does anyone, any of the public one?
So you opened the public hearing.
We opened the public hearing.
All right, there's any discussion?
Then we started reading. We're going to open it, it's late. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Whereas, certain filed maps show a paper road running from the southern end of Hermits Road to Hareman Road, sometimes identified as per RO map number three eight two nine, and whereas the Board of Trustees held a public hearing on the discontinuance of that paper road, and whereas the Board of Trustees has determined that the road serves no municipal or public purpose, and whereas discontinuing the road is an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and the Board of Trustees has determined that such discontinuance will have no environmental impacts, now therefore be it resolved that a negative declaration or secret be issued, and be it further resolved that the paper road running from the southern end of Hermits Road to Hareman Road and a lot identified in the Greenberg tax map as section two dot one oh, block fifty-eight, lot forty-four point two, be discontinued. I'll make the motion, can I have a second? All in favor?
No, we don't run it as a public hearing.
Um, you can add name that road, uh, work away. Creation of a holiday happening committee, expect this to take a while. Um, as we know, we, the holiday happening grew quite a bit this year, and, uh, we want to keep the momentum going, so, uh, Joe Arcino's asked us to create a formal committee. So if there's no further discussion, I'll read the resolution. Resolved to approve the creation of a holiday happening committee to plan and organize the event to take place on the first Saturday of December each year, and further resolved to appoint Beth Proper, Arlene Cardos Maniclos, and Samantha Endlich as members of the holiday happening committee, with the term expiring December twenty seventeen, so they can finish it and then get...
Aye, all made.
I'll make a motion, can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Brian, there's, uh, one other item, um, it was, the agenda was listed in, agenda was revised, it was listed in the consent agenda, but it's not a consent item.
Right.
This was added last minute this morning.
Resolved to make the following appointments to the Irvington Library, name Thomas Evans, rate twenty-eight forty-eight per hour, part-time librarian, effective February seventh twenty seventeen, and Mary Ann Anne Meyer, twenty-eight forty-eight per hour, is a part-time librarian, effective February seventh twenty seventeen. I'll make the motion, can I have a second? All in favor? Reports of board standing committees officers. Good man.
I'm going to fly, I let it pass. Well, John, there'd be sixteen items, I'll choose two or three. Spring is coming. We're looking for sponsors, and we're looking for players for our youth baseball consultants, please contact Andrew if you're interested in sponsorship. Our pack meeting is Wednesday, February fifteenth, in the Rex Center. The Woods Committee is meeting Thursday, February sixteenth, at the O'Hara Nature Center. Um, and again, just, um, spring is on its way, the Irvington Woods Committee wants to save the date for June fourth for our wine and cheese fundraiser, and don't feed the geese in our parks. John?
Ah, um, so, um, I've been in touch with some various folks, Joe Arcino actually asked me if we were going to do this again, so, um, Celebrate Irvington can happen again on, um, Father's Day again, and Sunnyside Federal would, uh, sponsor the trolley again, and the Historical Society is anxious to, um, do some planning for that day, so that's good with everybody. Can't change that date because it's part of the governor's path through history weekend, and it can't be on Saturday because that's the high school graduation. So, again, bring your father to Irvington, take a ride on the trolley, um, take a walk, et cetera.
Do we have to do anything in regards to that?
Well, I'm going to, going to group together to start...
No, I mean, does the board have to do anything?
No, I don't think so. Um, I mean, it's really...
Be supportive.
Doesn't, right, be supportive. I'm actually interested if anybody has any knowledge or experience with bringing classic cars to a town, to a park, sit there, you know, let people take photo ops, um, if you know connections. It was suggested last year at the last minute, um, and I thought I would do a little bit of research to find out, and so I'm asking if anybody has contacts. The, the farmer's market, um, I went to the last one, it was packed, full of vendors, this is the indoor market, um, and Ellen Passov said, "Please report that the winter market indoors at the Main Street School Auditorium on the second and fourth Saturdays, second and fourth Saturdays, from nine to one now until April," she says, "is fantastic," and I agree. We've had two markets with thirty vendors each time, vendors are selling out, and vendors and shoppers are delighted. The next, uh, market is on February eleventh. They had a fiddler walking around, and they had, I mean, lots of green stuff available, it wasn't, didn't feel like the middle of the winter. Greg Allen on the theater reports the clock tower player teens are doing Xanadu this weekend, um, and, um, they're also, um, looking to replace the awning, the, the structure is all right, but the awning itself needs to be replaced. Jim Inglesbee is here. Um, and the water department has been reading water meters, winter maintenance of their facilities, checking on high bills, um, and then jetted the sewers on Park Avenue and Center Street, and also on South Buckout Street, and did a fire inspection of Town Hall. Greg reports that there's winter storm number six and seven has happened. One was sleat nice, and one was one inch, uh, but they've also been maintaining winter equipment, recycling Christmas trees, you'd think they'd be on their way by now, um, preparing for a nor Easter, January twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Now, that happened, right? And we passed January twenty-third, I was gone, but you had a storm, or you didn't? You thought you were...
It was a storm.
You thought you were going to have a storm?
It was raining.
Okay. Um, and then there were three trees down on Cyrus Field Road during, uh, that's, I guess, that storm, and then, uh, rebuilding, repairing catch basins damaged by winter storms on Sycamore Lane. Dylan Pavols assisted the Parks Department with hauling material. Um, so that's all I have.
No, no liaison, I just wanted to, uh, mention that the police department did a wonderful breakfast at the senior center. It was a really good time had by all, thank you to them, and on behalf of the seniors, it was great.
Excellent. Bill's administrator.
All right.
Court treasurer.
Nothing tonight.
Close the jury.
Just briefly, um, I expect to close tomorrow with the next day on the parcel at the end of Hermits Road, uh, the, everything's been filed, the Declaration of Governor's Restrictions, everything's filed, and the teeth, and...
Is that out of this week?
That happened last week, but I expect, um...
Closing.
Yeah, well, we're going to, we're going to close, you know, by, uh, by mail and wire transfers, but it should be by mail this week, and so...
Excellent, great job.
There were, well, that was part of the road, you know, demapping today.
It was the last piece.
Yeah, and then the other thing, um, was to do with the next meeting is, the parcel that was conveyed to the village had some, had a cul-de-sac on it, so I'm having it conveyed in two separate parcels, the open space parcel and the cul-de-sac, so the cul-de-sac becomes part of Hermits Road, becomes part of the street, and so then we'll have, um, a resolution on at the, um, next meeting or the meeting after for the village to accept that as a street. So there's some record of it, somehow these streets get lost, you know, whether the village owns them or not, but that's what that'll be about.
What was your workshop?
Oh.
So you guys were watching the firehouse?
Which is why you guys...
Jim sat here the whole time, very attentive, like, they call him all the stuff. So, uh, we start with, uh, water sewer.
I put on everyone's desk here, um, a budget book.
Yes.
Open it up to water, it is, um, Jim's budget, he has a slight little recap. So he has a budget schedule as well. Oh, let me give Jim a second.
Yeah, all right, that's my mic. You always bring good news. Some of those that don't know Jim, that Jim English knows our water super too, you don't know everyone on the...
I know everybody except her.
Yeah.
I'm glad to meet you in further detail.
Exactly.
So, I'll let, uh, Jim take it away, we wrote a recap, um, and Jim's going to give you more information on, um, different efficiencies that the water department's initiated in the past year or so, if you'd like to expand on it, but, um, we're over the budget, and we're happy to report that we are recommending no increases here.
So, I, I got to say that I never thought I would be on the board when we got to within striking distance of getting rid, it was one point nine million dollars, um, and the budget for the whole department is how much, like...
Exactly.
It's a point four.
Yeah, so, it's basically a whole year's worth of, of expenses or deficits when we got here. Um, actually, Mary Ann, nice job, uh, kind of, um, settling a, a lawsuit with, um, with Greenberg, which helped a lot, kind of fast forwarded everything, but then the last few years have really been ill-fashioned, only through efficiency and, I guess, a little luck, uh, but, you know, it's been, uh, it's been great. It's, uh, the fact that we're almost there, I know our credit agencies are going to like that, um, this is great.
Absolutely, and it helps our fund balance in general fund.
Yes.
Because we're apportioning a reserve of half the deficit.
Right. This is great, so, it starts off with good news, so if anything else you have to say, just say it now.
I think I'll, I'll close it with that. Basically, uh, installing all the new water meters and installing the meters into the bigger buildings definitely helped us, we were, we're capturing a lot more, um, revenue through that. The meter program's ninety-nine, about ninety-nine point five percent done, we have a couple holdouts, but we're working on them, uh, some of them are rewires, but there's probably about seven meters, residential meters, that need to be changed out of the seventeen hundred and twenty meters that we have.
That's very good.
Right now, we're also, um, in the next year, we're going to be working on the low-service transfer tank, that was where we were having issues with water leaking into the reservoir, I'm upgrading that whole tank to make sure that we will be able to adjust it. Uh, right now, it's very hard to adjust, we keep it adjusted, but it's very tricky. Um, we had a leak survey, um, you know, basically, we found out that we don't have many leaks, and the ones that we have, we've addressed. Um, I think some of the reason we don't have breaks is because we replaced the PRVs, and we're able to maintain pressure better within our system, which was done a couple years back, uh, not when we've only had two water main breaks so far this year, and they're relatively minor compared to past. Basically, uh, we're just being more efficient.
Um, any, any, I didn't, nothing jumped off pages, large increases, it seems, uh, pretty much either lower or about the same, uh, I guess with the exception of the, the one debt, I don't remember how you're doing that.
Right, I can address that, when we, uh, now...
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear what it was.
It was said, said services increased.
Got you.
And, um, originally what was planned on the mountain road water tank was a repair, and then Jim looked into it further, and it seemed more cost-efficient, just replaces, as opposed to the repairs. So we had originally bonded on a repair, but while on the replacement, you're able to, um, expand, uh, put it out over further length, a longer length of time. So the point was, we rebonded that over forty years, and then we were using, uh, the old bonding to pay down the existing debt. Now it's about five years we're able to do that, and now it's no longer available, we used it up.
But other than that, it seems like it's pretty much a flat budget from our last year over here.
Yeah, we increased the labor for summer help a little bit, but other than that, um, we decreased the old time budget, uh, by nine thousand. There's, you know, it's, we took some money from some places, but, you know, all the places, but nothing too crazy.
So do you see any trend in water usage?
As far as...
You know, sort of, I know we don't have the numbers per capita, per household, whatever, but is there, is there, uh, right now, I see that we're going, oh, no, we're going down in New York excess charges, I guess that's what we see, uh, the impact of water use growth, right?
Correct.
So, so we're not seeing...
We're not seeing any more increased usage, we're seeing a little more of a, you know, usage. Uh, you know, one of the things with these high bills that I, I put in my report is, uh, now the meters, most meters, not every meter, has the ability to record ninety-six days worth of data. So now we're able to go and show them, uh, where the leaks are, like what time, yeah, now. So I think it's making people a little more conscious of how they're using their water, plus, when I go to a high bill, I explain to them how to read the meter, you know, so with their irrigation systems, which is the driver of pretty much every high bill.
Yeah, right.
I was doing approximately thirty to forty high bills per month from June until just recently, um, and it's a lot of irrigation, so now you're able to actually show them, instead of saying, "Oh, it's just irrigation," you actually physically show them how much water they're using during irrigation.
Okay, is that, I'm sorry, this is fascinating, is that logged, how does it log, is it logged, like, is it a daily summary or is it hourly summary?
Hourly summary for ninety-six days.
You can't, wow.
So just today, I went and did one.
At, at the meter, it's not, we don't, it's not...
No, 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 I understand, but you can, you can say, yeah, right, you can say, look, you know, and it corresponds to their, their irrigation meter.
Well, there's no separate, there's no separate, uh, meter for that, but you can kind of show them, okay...
No, I meant their, their irrigation clocks are...
Yeah, but you can kind of see it scheduled too, like, especially at Elektra Hollow every other day, you'll see a big spike, and then you'll see it a little bit lower, and then a big spike, and then a little bit lower, and it'll be like that for the whole month.
And, um, also part of it is, I, I've been showing people, okay, beginning of the year when you start up your irrigation system, here's how you read your meter, read the meter, run it through a cycle, read it again, and then times that by forty-six, you're watering every other day, and that'll give you just your sprinkler usage. And then you could, you know, trend out how much you're going to use over a three-month period, so you don't go to an excess rate. So people are being a little more conscientious of, of how much water they're using as far as irrigation, because now we actually have something kind of solid to show them.
Weren't we supposed to make a video of how to read your meters?
Yes, yes, we were.
Say that again, Mark, weren't we supposed to...
Make a video of how to...
Oh, right, right.
Is that still important, do you think?
Um, we could do it, I mean, any information's good.
I just need a reminder.
I don't mind.
I think too, in the spring, we need to come back and tell people to, um, put in their rain gauges for their, uh, sprinklers as well, that they would get reminded with every high bill, that's another suggestion.
I mean, I, I have like, kind of a little dialogue that I give them before, you know, every time, because, you know, it's, it's just heartening to see some of these bills, because I know as a homeowner, I'd be, you know, it's pretty scary, you know, some of the, some of the bills that I've seen. So, um, you know, I do my due diligence to try and help them, and show them ways to be efficient, and ways to watch their water bill, and how much, you know, water they're using, so...
We, Walter Montgomery and I worked on a brochure last year, which didn't go out, um, but I'm going to bring it up to Larry again. but I'm gonna bring it up to Larry again, is we created a Water Wise brochure.
We didn't have no of those.
No, no, that was the irrigation insert. There's another one that's got that information plus more about how areas, ways to save. And, and I was just gonna suggest, I can talk to Larry again, I was gonna suggest we should look and see if that's worth going out in the, in a sequence of the next three months. Do you have that file anymore, Larry? You want me to forward it?
Sure do, yeah.
I can forward it to you.
Sure do.
We updated, you know, we created some more information on the village website for water savings, recommendations and stuff. Extending beyond was originally there.
You want to send me a copy or will you send me a copy off the house over?
Yeah, so it hasn't changed for a year, so if you have that PDF or otherwise, I'll send it to you. It's the brochure though, not the insert.
What was your question? The overtime line going down about 11%. Is that just less water main breaks or?
Yeah. We've had less water main breaks. I've done the weekend work. I guess it's all, so it's, you know, I mean, I imagine water main breaks. I mean, that's the driver of overtime usually. So, you know, we do rounds, four hours on the weekends. We used to have turbidity alerts, which would be an additional two hours per day. And since I've gotten the system changed over from a two gate to a gate, we have to do less testing and it's on Greenberg to do the turbidity testing. So we've saved, you know, four hours and that, that usually happens about 26 weeks out of the year, so.
Great.
Could you say that again? What part does Greenberg do? Greenberg does?
The turbidity sample. When we have a turbidity alert from, if you get these turbidity alerts from New York City, like when we get a large rain, something like that, the aqueduct gets a little dirtier and turbidity, which is particles in the water. So we'll get an alert when it's above 1.5 coming in, then we get an alert and we have to go do additional bacteria tests to make sure that we're disinfecting properly, so.
But instead of your guys, our guys doing it, Greenberg has agreed to do this?
They're a supplier. They supply us with the water from the pump station. So it's at the entry point where it needs to be taken and we're not the entry point the Greenberg pump station is.
I'm just curious, on the last page, workers' comp is down 62%.
Which card are you putting?
Workers' comp, I mean.
Oh, work.
I did an appropriation based upon the actual rate and their salaries.
I'm still in the line. I'm sorry, I'm on sewer.
It's okay.
I skipped right through.
It's okay.
That's okay.
I think a lot of these numbers are so small that the change looks okay.
Right, it's a huge percentage increase, but not a huge dollar increase.
Well, but it's.
It didn't go down, because if you look at the actual results, which are the left, the left two columns in that line that you're looking at.
Well, right now, I'm sewer again.
Yeah, still sewer workers' comp.
You said we over budgeted a little?
Yeah, that was over budgeted, essentially. It's an adjustment of how it's allocated. The sewer fund, just to put it in perspective, the, the water department is the driver of all of this. The sewer is simply billed based upon the amount of water usage a person uses on the basis that everything that goes in goes out generally, unless you're irrigating, I suppose. So the sewer, we do account for them separately and there are separately designated sewer fees, sewer rates that are levied. But in large part, you know, there's not a, there's not an Irvington Sewer Department with like a separate building and different personnel. It's all the same people.
There's no sewer plant.
Right, so there are, there are certain allocations that we do. We designate one person's salary to be borne by the sewer fund. It doesn't mean that that person only works in the sewer, it's the entire department. So it's, it's a lot of allocation that's going on. So I think this was an adjustment of the allocation, that's all. So it doesn't reflect the fact that our workers' comp went down, because it didn't go down in overall. It reflects how we were allocating it. You'll see that when we go into the village general fund, where you see all the rest of the workers' comp agreements, you know what I'm saying?
We'll run a lot more questions. I just wanna, I know we don't have a lot of time to interact, mostly because we aren't complaining about it. But once a year at least, I just wanna say what a great job I think you're doing. Anytime we have questions or residents have questions, you give thoughtful, competent, clear answers. And I'd say 90% of the time is when someone has a huge bill, which they hate you, and then you go there and they say, what a great guy. It's a very, it's a very good magic trick to pull off.
Low turbidity.
Turidity, yeah. And you can say turbidity with these words. And the fact that we've gotten the deficit down so much that, you know, this time next year, we could be five, hopefully.
Seven.
Yeah, exactly. We won't be running a bankrupt water department anymore. It really is just really great work and you do so much of it on your own, you have your own initiative. And I just wanna say as a word, we all really, really appreciate it and we have a lot of confidence in the work you do out in the water and sewer department. Appreciate it. And thank you for sitting through this meeting.
So I do have one question to follow up for Larry and maybe, but I'm not sure. We've been talking now for at least a year about trying to get a change to the water bill, so this is gonna be back to what the software is, but the thing that actually indicated this time last year, your bill showed you using, you know, like the basic comparison, baseline comparison from a, from a previous billing period. And at the time, I think it came up that it was something that couldn't really be done on the existing software, but had to be maybe part of a software update or something.
Baseline for residents or baseline per?
Per resident, yeah.
Well, we have a, we have a consumption page, which gives us the usage for basically eight years back.
That's, that's in term, I think, yeah.
We're trying to put it on the bill as a.
Yeah, this is a bill, yeah, the question's really.
So the question is, we've, we've been actively looking at various programs and I think we're gonna be close to making a decision. There hasn't been a billing program that was providing us with that type of billing information. And the other thing was very important to us was the ability to have an online, ability for residents to come online and do bill pay.
And review their.
Look at their, and review their usage, just like you can look at your utility bills and your usage.
So you're saying that's not generally available?
Well, unfortunately, most of the providers did not have a good software solution, third party providers. And we're close to making a determination on a vendor, software vendor. So it would mean leaving this software vendor totally for the water billing and then having our files converted to a new software program and.
And you could do this kind of reporting?
Yes.
That would be great.
That was one of the criteria in reviewing the water program.
Great, great, great. Thank you for the update. Do you, when do you think you might know?
We're close. I have proposals on my desk and we're looking at the pricing and.
There's other modules.
Yeah, other modules. It's not a standard, yeah.
Right, it's not just one package.
It's not just one package.
Okay, great.
And you're looking whether you are on the server, cloud-based, and there's different maintenance aspects of it.
So let us know, for sure. It's a great topic.
Don't worry.
Yeah, it'll be.
Isn't that expensive?
Well, yeah. It's not gonna be. But, and we're not doing it just because of the water billing, by the way. There's other issues that we have with.
We're looking at also.
The financials of our revenues.
Right. And we would look also to deal with taxes eventually, where people then could go online, view their taxes, pay their bills. So it's part and parcel of looking at a larger scope of the resident services.
That's great, thank you.
Drive home, man. See anyone worse than I did.
By the way, huh? Can you check my meter?
Sure.
Can I be in the video?
I have, I have a meter.
Hey, chief.
Hey, Jeff.
How you doing?
All right.
Good to meet you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Jeff.
Chief Tarikon?
Chief Tarikon.
So I see the summary is you're shifting 10,000 from equipment to maintenance of equipment?
Correct.
Request an increase to our 5,000 in program maintenance. What's program maintenance?
We brought a new software package to manage personnel, calls, inventory, and so there is a yearly maintenance year that goes along with that package.
Fair enough. And that's your hour a day for the day manager?
Yeah, we have two of our firefighters that work at the firehouse and they do maintenance on equipment around the building. One of them works before and after normal working hours and then Ronnie works during the day and we want to give him an extra hour. He typically helps us go to town hall, do paperwork, go and runs the vendors, meet vendors, and the two-hour time window that he's currently working in isn't really effective for, for us. Considering the three chiefs are normally at their normal jobs, out of town or busy, having somebody at the firehouse for two or three hours a day is very helpful to get things done. So we want to just increase that from nine to 11 to nine to 12, Monday to Friday.
Sounds fair.
It was not originally, that's a new item that wasn't in the original recap.
Okay. It's not, it was printed out?
It was when I had gone to the board originally, was like, how much we were over the cap, the extra hour was not in there.
Gotcha.
That's fine. Now, it's over the cap.
Right. But I think there's a few moving parts, so we're gonna go back at the end. Yep.
You guys, so by not requesting more, I'm assuming you're saying that you have enough in your budget now for training and equipment?
Yeah, we have, we've been, we've been able to handle our needs with our current budget. Brendan and I moved some, some money around. We do a lot of, a lot more maintenance of existing equipment than purchasing new. So our maintenance budgets are growing, but we're not buying a lot more new equipment. Fleet maintenance is really our big expenditure, keeping the trucks serviced and well-maintained. We also have a lot of, we'll call them unfunded mandates, to test gear, clean gear annually. So the federal government or the state will say you need to do X every year. And so that starts increasing quickly in our equipment budget and maintenance budgets. So we're trying to deal with things like that, but the current budget as it's been, we've been able to, been able to handle it.
It's been pretty much flat, as I can remember. So you just kind of do it the same amount.
Yeah, we've been able to. Last year, we started cleaning gear on an annual basis and having it professionally repaired, so stitching, things of that nature. Gear is a 10-year lifespan. They tell us we have to get rid of it in 10 years, so that time goes quickly. And so we decided to try to extend the life of our gear. We send it out to get cleaned. That's increased our, our repair bill a little bit last year, but we're gonna continue that program this year. Training, our training budget is adequate. We get a lot of our training through New York State and through the county of Westchester, which is no cost to us, so that's kind of helpful in the, in the training, training aspect.
On the, on the gear, you had the grant. That's right, that was awarded to my honor.
Yeah, we spent, we got a $27,000 grant from the federal government in 2016, and so we bought 11 new sets of turnout gear, which would have had to be either put in the capital project for 2016, 2017, or at least drawn out across a number of years through the operating budget. So that took a nice little piece of what we needed to purchase out of this year and the last year's budget. But we will continue to buy turnout gear on a regular basis to keep that 10-year rotation even throughout.
So you don't get slanted.
Yeah, so you don't get slanted.
Chief, pardon my ignorance.
The chief wrote that grant entirely. Just for you.
It's not the first one either.
No, I think I'm up to like $40,000, $50,000.
So we're fully volunteer.
We're all volunteer, from myself, chief, all the way down to the newest member. All volunteers, all residents of the village.
And, and our membership level, is it, is it steady? Is it?
We could always use more members. We.
No waiting list.
There is no waiting list. It's very difficult to keep people in the department. The younger members.
They're neighbors.
Younger members are not able to live in town. So they, even if they join in high school or sometime in their twenties, the chances of them sticking around like myself and Dave are slim. There aren't many of them anymore. We used to have a big force that were villages' employees. That, that group doesn't really exist anymore. Those guys kind of work in town and move wherever they can afford to live, so. We are going to do a campaign in April. New York State provides some marketing materials and does a whole statewide recruitment drive. And so we're gonna do that again. We did it about three years ago, we had two or three members. We're gonna do it again this April to try and generate some membership, lots of flyers and signs and website announcements and see if we can get some more members. But the initial firefighter class is 104 hours of schooling up in Westchester, plus then another 39 immediately following, so.
It was 40 when we started.
Yeah, it was, I took 40 hours. So the, New York State has changed the requirements for the volunteers to match or at least degrade them to an educational level equivalent to a paid firefighter, which makes a lot of sense, but it's hard to swallow as.
Yeah, it's just hard, it's harder to get.
For the time.
To have the time, even if they want to do it.
And with pure villages, are they also all volunteer or is it common to have paid, paid and volunteers mixed together?
Yonkers is paid department. Then Hastings, all the way up to Peekskill on the waterfront, is volunteer.
And do they all have the same issues with losing the, the middle gener, the middle age range or?
Yeah, there are some departments that seem to have a population that maybe is more receptive to, to sticking around or volunteering. You know, a lot of our younger members are family members of existing members.
Right.
And we don't really draw. You just, oh, excuse me. Yeah.
So how's morale?
Morale's good. We're, we're.
You went through a shaky period for a while.
We had a couple of tough years, but we made it, we made a comeback. We have good, good organization, we're well-run and we just need to get some new blood and try and have some extra volunteers to help out. Obviously, call volume, we don't have a lot of fires, but our call, call volume in 2016 was actually up by 50 calls. We did 395 calls.
Is that, was that due to accident response or what?
Two Main Street was the big winner, like 25 calls for the year. One South Astor.
Which, which one is Two Main Street?
Two Main Street is burned.
Uh-huh.
I was gonna kiss me over on 25.
It's chronic.
I'm just like, why don't we?
And we're trying to address it with the alarm system and the managing agent right now. One South Astor is another big one.
That's the powerhouse building in the parking lot?
Next to the Soul Chet.
Next to Soul Chet.
Does it have?
Red hat is constantly going off. So those are big, we go up to the Hudson a number of times and the Sun on the Parkway, but those are usually legitimate runs. Everything at, the other buildings are nuisance alarms.
And the, the alarms can't, well, obviously, something to be done to.
All of them are just have to be addressed through the managing agents of the buildings. It's a function of where the smoke detectors are in relation to their kitchen or bathroom, general space, poor maintenance. Each, each alarm has its own unique problem. Fires though.
But you have leverage? I'm gonna hit you over the head with this fire extinguisher if you don't do something about it.
At the, at the end of the day, you know, it's the boy who cried wolf. Less and less people showing to Two Main Street and every time Two Main Street goes off, you're just hoping it's not something, that's the only nonsense.
Can we charge them for calls, an excess of the starting number per year?
I mean, that's what I was trying to get at, but leverage, you start actually.
We have a list from the police department.
There's charges for false alarms.
Yeah?
Yes.
Are they hired?
It's helping, they've got to get there, but.
Can we raise the fee for false alarms?
Yeah.
You don't look happy with that notion, or?
No, no, I'm.
But in, in general, the departments, the morale is high, the membership is, you know, excited to train, excited to be a part of our group. Our budget is, our operating budget's adequate to, to work with. And I think we proved that over the past couple of years. We have good equipment, in the regular operating budget, I think we're, we're able to move forward and help you guys stay under attack.
And you hadn't had any problems with, what was it, County Sixty, is that what it's called? What's the county dispatch?
Control.
Sixty control, yeah.
No, it's been working very well.
Yeah, so you're happy?
Yeah, we're happy. The new software that we're buying is going to tie directly into that software. The data dispatchers enter, gets pulled down, and gets put into our reports. And so we have to do less paperwork at the end of the day to enter in addresses, times, members who have shown up. So it's taking a little bit of the burden off of us of sitting there manually inputting all of this data three hundred and ninety-four times a year.
Cool, yeah, good.
Great.
Are you happy with the, the, you know, the, I'm going to call it the siren, the, we always, every year we talk about whether or not, you know, that's changing, I know it's only about six, it's, it's not eight plus two plus whatever. But is it adequate and you want to keep it that way, or do you want to change it?
Yeah, um, you know, our stance still remains the same, the horn is still valuable, still valuable. It still alerts people to firefighters that there's a call and public that something's going on. There are a number of times where past Chief Chris Polley's on Main Street, his pager doesn't go off. Just the radio waves don't let him know that there's a call via the pager, but the horn goes off twenty seconds later and he knows something's going on. And then he can then, you know, make his way to the firehouse or make the call, and then a few seconds later, his, his phone will start getting a text message. But twenty seconds, thirty seconds can make a big difference in somebody's house burning, so. I am not going to make any recommendations to silence the horn, I think it's valuable to the public safety. And we also hear from residents who have an emergency. "Oh, I heard the horn blow, I knew you guys were coming." Time and time again, you hear that. "Oh, I knew the horn was blowing and my call got through."
And you guys know, right.
And, and so that's.
That's priceless.
And I often say, "I heard the horn," when am I going to get my, my texts? I've had it minutes, so never mind thirty seconds, if you're in two minutes.
Sometimes it's before, sometimes it's after.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. So it's, it's great technology, it's a great extra way to get it if you're out of town or something, but it's, to me, it's worked well, but it's not a perfect solution.
And it's six, right? It's six, six no matter what.
It's an automatic, it's automatic, so the sixty control, the dispatchers hit the button, it sets the pagers off, it sets something off in the police station, which sets the timer on to set the horn off, so it's all automated. I, I live right on the town board on the south over in University Palatine, I hear the horn. I've been out in the backyard with my kids, my pager's not on my hip, and I hear the horn, I know something's going on, and.
So there's no, there's never anything but six? There's nothing, no other message that's a num, a different number of blasts?
Yeah, those days of a code being a certain street are no longer done because it's automated. And the reason, the official stance is that it's guaranteed delivery, so the dispatchers can guarantee that they're hitting the button and the radio frequency they're using, they, they have complete control over that. Same thing with the horn, we know guaranteed delivery, we're in charge of that signal making it to the compressor, setting the horn off. Cell phones, email isn't guaranteed delivery, you have, you don't have full control of the path.
Or the delay.
Delay, Larry and Brian just spoke about, but sometimes, there's a list, and I'm first one on the list, so my phone always goes off first, but the last guy on the list, it could be forty seconds, two minutes, five minutes. So the, the cell phone technology isn't a reliable backup, that's why the horn will still work.
It's a backup, but it's not a reliable primary.
But it's not the primary.
No question. But I, it's, I mean, I, I see the patterns all the time. You know, I haven't sat there and logged it, but I know sometimes it comes, sometimes the.
It's simultaneous, yeah.
Or simultaneous.
Yeah. Sometimes it's minutes.
Redundancy is good.
I'm, I'm not willing to sacrifice somebody's safety for six blasts of more. I'm not going to take that fight on.
Well, as we always say, you know, we're super appreciative, your entire budget would be the cost of one paid chief. So, you know, it's an unbelievable service that you guys provide. You know, we are always here if there's other things, if you, you know, doors open, if you guys want to come talk about what you're doing. Definitely during your recruiting drive, feel free to come.
Yeah, definitely.
Happy to help you however we can. We can't thank you guys enough, it's another night and you're here until ten o'clock, and we appreciate that. But we appreciate what you guys do, and not just every day, but every night, because you never know in the, the work schedule office, you know, what time of day, on average, you're going to get pulled out of your regular job and your family life and everything else. So we really appreciate it, we're glad that the budget's adequate, and that you have everything you need to do what you do.
Except for a firehouse.
Except for a firehouse.
I would save that for the Capitol meeting.
Yeah.
And the truck, right?
That'll be a different story.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Anthony.
Have a great night.
Thanks, Dave. I have a request I have, is that some other kids' truck day, whatever you're calling it.
Get the truck down to the library?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, uh.
That was very popular.
You already sort of, you know, there's another binder, another divider.
Okay, so we should be bringing this.
Yes, exactly, it's the schedule.
She's always.
Keep adding.
Adults get into the car?
Is it possible to leave?
I need to come over and.